Good evening, if we can take our seats, please, we're ready to begin our meeting.
Yes, and thank you for your texts and emails.
All right, let's hold everybody in. Vice President, all right, City Clerk color roll, please.
Commissioner Castillo. Vice Mayor Good.
Here.
Commissioner Schwartz. Mayor Commissioner Seifel.
I'm here.
Mayor Ordus.
Yeah.
City Manager DeDoch.
Here.
City Attorney Goran.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Carlos Marquez, please. That's you. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Marquez. Okay. We have a long meeting tonight, ladies and gentlemen, and commissioners, so we want to get through it as best we can so that the people that have an item at the end aren't here till we bring the midnight away, love. So with that, I've got a presentation. First, I want to congratulate and wish Commissioner Carl Schechter a happy birthday. Jay and his family will be watching. Jay and his family, happy birthday, Commissioner. Ninety-four. Ninety-four. All right, I have a proclamation for Senator Lauren Book. Senator Lauren Book has been helping our cities. Can't hear? Is she coming?
Yeah.
Oh, well, then I'll hold it. I was told she might not be here. All right, Commissioner Seifel, let's get on with your presentation. Jane Brunner will have a nice presentation, which she helped her get her badge. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor. Ms. Brunner, you all, I'm sure, recognized her from before she came here, when she, about a year and a half ago, perhaps, I'm not sure of the exact time, to present to us what her project was going to be to get her star for her scouts. And it was bat houses and how they deal and how they work within the environment, to help the environment, actually. A lot of people don't really understand how that was, but she took that on. And how interesting that this young lady went into something that was animals and environment. She is going to be studying to be a veterinarian, and she currently is working with a veterinarian, learning all that she can learn and is ready to start back into school. She's a charter school and hopefully going on to college to become, I don't know, small animal, big animal, exotic animal, I don't know, something veterinarian. And so we're very proud of her and her accomplishments. So tonight, she just wanted to very quickly tell us about how she actually ended up going through the process and getting her Gold Star and Scout. So, Ms. Brunner, please, thank you.
Just hit that button down there that says to speak.
Okay.
Good evening, go ahead.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Jane Brunner, and I'm a Girl Scout Ambassador and recently received my Girl Scout Gold Award. The Girl Scout Gold Award is the highest award that a Girl Scout can receive. For my Gold Award, I showed the importance of bats in our community and our daily life. As we all know, the pandemic has changed the way that we live our lives. At the beginning of my project, the pandemic had not yet begun. Because of the new rise in cases, I had to change my game plan. I held online sessions for the girls that were not comfortable going out and changed the times and set up a my event to ensure that everyone was safe. In addition to changing our lives, the pandemic has changed our viewpoints on many topics. One topic was the spread of the virus by animal to human. Towards the beginning of the pandemic, bats were thought to be the source of the COVID-19 virus. However, that's not the case. Research shows that bats have very different immune systems where their body temperatures rise very high, leading to them to be immune to certain viruses. Although, like humans, their immune systems can be compromised when they're stressed. This stress is caused by destruction of their habitats, something that is caused primarily by human action. This ties into the pandemic because bats were placed in cages in the wet markets where the COVID-19 virus was thought to have started. Their immune systems were compromised due to the increased stress of these animals, directly leading to the formation of a disease which could have been spread to humans through physical contact and consumption. This is a prime example of why we need to protect these animals in order to live healthier and safer lives. Bats impact human life in a variety of other ways. They are responsible for pollinating over 500 species of plants. These plants include mangoes, bananas, and even avocados. Speaking of food, bats also help farmers keep your food safe from bugs. They are natural pest repellent, meaning they eat bugs that eat farmers' crops. They allow farmers to use less pesticides and GMOs, making your food safer to eat. With all that eating, they also have to go to the bathroom. Bats disperse seeds through their poop. They are responsible for 95% of the first new regrowth in recovering forests, meaning that with their help, forests are able to regrow quicker and healthier. I hope this has helped you see how important bats truly are in our ecosystem and in our lives. Throughout the completion of my project, I was able to spread this knowledge to many minds, hopefully changing the way that people view bats. I've placed houses, bat houses, on numerous campsites, at schools, swimming pool gardens, and even at sawgrass recreational parks. I've received updates from the groundkeepers at the campsites that bats have moved into the houses that I built and installed. I also have a bat house for you today to place in the city of Pembroke Pines. Ideally, the bat house will be placed at least 15 feet in the air and around the body of water. Thank you.
Oh, thank you. Commissioner Seifel.
Thank you, and Mayor, I think that Ms. Brunner has something to give to you.
Yes, I have a bat house for you.
She has a bat house for you, for the city that, hopefully, we can hang it somewhere here in the city to see how it works.
Okay, we've become a bat city. Great, thank you so much, we will.
All right, where do you want me to put it?
Mr. Buckman. Are you here? She has a gift for us with a bat. Can you take it from her, we're going to put it someplace in the city?
First time for everything, right, Mr. Buckman? Thank you, Ms. Brunner, we appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
We have... Okay, you can just put it up here, I'll take it, thank you. Thank you so much, appreciate it.
Okay.
Mayor, we have really great kids in this city, don't we?
We have great kids.
We have great kids, young adults, not kids, they're young.
Right, right.
Thank you again, and her family's always here supporting, so thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
We became a bird sanctuary over on Palm Avenue, now we've become a bat sanctuary. Senator Book, is that you behind that mask? All right. Well, Senator Book is here, and I started to say before, I have a proclamation to read, making August the 4th Senator Book Day. But she does so much for cities. I've been, you know, going up to Tallahassee for a number of years. She really is very, very good at helping home rule and cities. And tonight is a little different story. We had a program, A Safe Place for Newborns, and it was such a terrific program. Nick, come on up and say a few words about it. And Senator Book took this right under her wings and ran with it. Just hit that button for speak.
Got it, okay. Safe Place for Newborns is a program that saves babies from the open and initial access and that's abandonment. Now, with 24/7 follow-up hotline, English, Spanish, and Korean, we receive about 71 calls per day, and we get all the help. To date, 331,000 babies have been saved from the open and initial abandonment, 333,000 babies found in other states, and all over the country of Honduras. And tonight, we're here to praise Senator Book.
Thank you, Nick, appreciate it. Senator Book, would you come up?
Hi.
Good evening, Senator.
How are you, Mr. Mayor?
Children are good.
Everybody's good.
That is good.
Everybody's making a mess while I'm here.
Okay, Senator, it's a great pleasure for me, on behalf of this commission, to make Senator Lauren Book Day, August the 4th. Whereas Senator Lauren Book was born and raised in South Florida, where she currently resides, and whereas Senator Book ran unopposed for the 32nd District seat in the Florida Senate in 2016, Senator Book works tirelessly as a Florida Senator to address and speak up for issues affecting all Florida families. And whereas Senator Book is the founder and CEO of Lauren's Kids, which was created in 2007, her foundation works to create a world where the exploitation of children is not tolerated. And whereas Senator Book is also a member of the Florida Child and Youth Cabinet, the majority, the majority, the Marjorie Stoneman Douglas Public Safety Commission, the Women Suffrage Centennial Commission, and Human Trafficking Statewide Council, direct service organization. And whereas at the request of Nick E. Silverio, founder of A Safe Haven for Newborns, the city of Pembroke Pines would like to recognize Senator Lauren Book for her continued leadership in protecting the innocence of our children and being a champion for all the families in the state of Florida. Now, therefore, I, Frank Seeters, by the authority vested me as the mayor of the greatest city in the world, Pembroke Pines, to hereby proclaim August 4th, 2021, as Senator Lauren Book Day. Congratulations, Senator.
Because of this COVID, I'm not going to come down. I just want to say one thing. Thank you, thank you, this is an honor, and a lot of appreciation. And thank you for all that you've done for the fairies and children, and a lot of charity for all of them. And thank you for having the doctor, Safe Place for Newborns. It's an honor to know you, thank you.
Senator, a couple of words?
Sure, I know that you guys have a lot of work to do in the greatest city of the world, but don't tell me other cities that. You know, the work that Safe Haven does, and Nick does, saves lives. And when, sometimes, you're fighting for great bills in Tallahassee, and sometimes, we're fighting bad bills. And this was one where it was a bill that we didn't really like, and we were able to change it. We were able to keep children safe and take out some things that I think would have been really detrimental to children throughout our state. And so this was, without you, would not have been possible. We could not have done it without the advocacy, and, you know, we were able to change some really bad policy and to make, and keeping children safe. So this is very special, I'll be at the Mayor's Cafe with my proclamation on that day. Thank you, and thank you for what you all do and all of the great work. We're, I'm just happy and honored to serve you, so this is very special.
Thank you, Senator, appreciate it. Okay, as we move on, let me just say, as the mayor of the city, please, if you haven't been vaccinated, please, go get your shot, please. This has gone wild. And today, I got a call from Memorial, they are stopping all elective surgery because they're up to 220%, and they're young people. So please, if you have any influence, let's get these shots, let's get rid of this thing. I thought we were doing it once before, but we haven't. Commissioner, Jay, did you want to say something?
Thank you, Mayor. It's with a heavy heart that we lost a community member over the past week, Joe Zias. Joe Zias was recognized by the city of Pembroke Pines for his life's work, him being a lifelong Dodger fan, a great photographer capturing memories that, quite honestly, you never knew that they were captured until he sent you that photo. Joe leaves behind a beautiful family, many friends who loved him, and I'd like to have a moment of silence.
Thank you. Thank you. I just found out about a man who ribbon-cutting the other night, and they told me about it, I didn't even know about it. Okay, Commissioner Seifel, you had something else?
Yes, yes, Mayor. If I, if I could, if this would be the appropriate time, or as what you would deem to be the appropriate time, we have, there's actually three items that are on our agenda this evening, and all three are dealing with a very timely, very important, very, very important issue to all of us. And so, over the past few days, Mayor, I have seen a number of comments and what have you out on, out on the media. And I'm a little bit, I'm a little bit concerned that some of the information that is, that is out there is maybe not as accurate or is not as up to date as it should be. And I certainly don't want decisions of this importance or our residents feeling like that we are not trying to respond to all of their concerns and to make sure that the information that is out there is correct and is up to date and is factual. And I'm not saying that it's not, but from some of the stuff that I have read, it does seem like perhaps some of our residents maybe have different impressions of what's really out there. So, Mayor, what I'm asking is, these three items, 23, 29, and 34, that I would like, at what point you would deem to be appropriate, Mayor, that city manager would be able to discuss all three of those items and the information that is in there and be able to provide our listening audience, our residents, with the correct, factual, up-to-date information on what it is. And just to make sure that everybody's comfortable, I think it's very important that our residents are knowledgeable and comfortable with decisions and comments and questions that they may have that they would like to ask. And I think we should be able to provide them complete answers. And I think I would ask that, Mayor, again, at what time you would deem appropriate that city manager would be able to discuss those three items. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, well, item 23, we're going to have to listen if it's pulled, so we'll do that.
It would be, well, what I'm asking is that, before we go into doing any of that, 23, 29, and 34, that city manager would have the opportunity to address those three issues.
All right. All right, let's go on first with announced items to be pulled from the agenda. Any items?
No items, Mayor.
How about items that's requested of the public?
Mayor, several items, requests of the public, to speak at the request of the public, were provided to the clerk, but these items are already on the agenda, and you will, the mayor will call upon, as you go to each of the items, then you will call on the respective speakers.
All right, is that okay with everybody, we'll speak when the item comes up? Okay, good. All right.
Thank you.
Announced with the board and committee appointments? Mr. Seifel?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, it's my honor to announce my appointment of Mr. Nandike Tripathi to the Environmental Advisory Board for District 3. He is here this evening, and if you want to say just a couple of quick words, that would be fine. But his resume is outstanding, an outstanding resume. So if you, would you, Mr. Tripathi, like to come up and say a few words quickly? Turn it on.
Yeah, you have to push that button, sir. Now, on the bottom, who says speak?
There you go.
Good evening, sir.
Commissioner, thank you very much for nominating me for the board. Hopefully, I will be able to serve with the best of my ability to that particular board. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, we look forward to your input and what you bring to the board from your past history. You have a pretty, pretty impressive resume, so thank you for volunteering for the city, we appreciate it.
Thank you. Congratulations. All right, City Attorney, I'm going to request that we grant Commissioner Seifel's request to have 23, 29, and 34 pulled for the manager to make a dissertation?
Mayor, I'm not actually asking that they be pulled or taken out of sequence, the normal, I'm just asking that those three items, since they are tied so much together, that they, that those issues be addressed before we get into the actual meat of the agenda.
All right, City Manager, go ahead.
Okay, Mayor, we are talking about the issue of solid waste. Item number 23 is a motion to approve the Third Amendment to the agreement with Waste Pro for solid waste and recycling collection and the disposal services adjusting the rates for the period of September 1 through January 1 of 2022. As you know, Amendment 2, that was approved by the commission back in June, because of a situation that our contract with our waste hauler was expiring, and the city did go out for proposals and bids. And the city decided, the city commission decided for the administration to negotiate with Waste Pro, which is our current hauler. At that time, Waste Pro had agreed for an interim period up till September 1 to maintain service as it is with all of the services, which is solid waste, bulk, and recycling, until September 1. If we could not reach an agreement for a renewal, then we would have had an opportunity to negotiate with the other bidder for the same service. So our challenge was, during the summer, was to negotiate an agreement with Waste Pro. We were able to, and what is on the agenda this evening, Waste Pro did agree to change Amendment 2, modify it with Amendment 3, and maintain the current rate that we have per month for solid waste collection, which is 23.35, I believe. The only change from September 1 to January is a CPI, a cost of living. This is something that's always been in our contract since the beginning of time. That resulted in a 38 cents per month increase. So from today until January the 1 of 2022, all of the services that we currently have will remain in place. In other words, your residential garbage will be picked up, your recycling will be picked up, your bulk service will be picked up, and all of the commercial will continue to that time. Now, what is the significance of January 1, 2022? The city entered into an agreement over 20 years ago with Ruder Recycling, and that was a facility that was built out on 208th and Pembroke Road. And that was considered to be a solid waste recycling facility. It was in operation for maybe a year and a half, and there were issues with its operation, and it was shut down. A company, Waste Management, acquired it, and they maintained it as a transfer station where all of the garbage and recycling went to that same facility, and it was separated there, and it took all of our garbage from that date moving forward. The contract expired on January, expires on January 1, 2022. We also attempted to negotiate with them a disposal fee, which was more in line with the current facility that most cities in Broward County uses, and it's a contract and an agreement with Broward County and the city, and the name of the company is Wheelabrader, out on 441 just south of State Road 84. That is a waste-to-energy facility, which means all of the waste stream goes there, it is processed, and as a result of that, the burn of that, of all the waste, it generates electricity. The state recognizes that as an energy, as a waste-to-energy facility that does meet the state mandates for recycling. So the new contract, which is ordinance, it's item number 29 on the agenda, it's an ordinance granting a franchise to Waste Pro for the next seven years, beginning January 2nd. And the price that we negotiated with them was far less than what the bid amount was. I think everybody should remember that when the item came before the commission, the company said, well, your cost of disposal of garbage is going to more than double. And when the bids came in, they came in between $43 and $50 a month for our residents. However, the way we structured that bid is we asked every vendor who would bid on it to give us a cost for, what is the cost for collection, what is the cost for disposal, what is the cost for collection of recyclables, what is the disposal of recyclables, as well as the bulk service. So we broke it all out independently. So what is before the commission this evening on item 29 is an agreement with Waste Pro simply to be compensated for the collection aspect of it. So we get into item 34, which is the waste-to-energy component of it, where we are asking the city commission to enter into an agreement with that facility up to the year 2023, for us to dispose of our solid waste there at a much reduced cost or rate as we are currently providing. And the third component, which is the bulk, we have decided to contract directly with the vendor rather than through Waste Pro, which in fact has saved us dollars as well. On the second reading of September, we will have the number for the commission, what that cost will be to our residential community. Our estimation at this point, based on our negotiations, it will be minimal. It will be a little, maybe just a little bit higher than what residents are currently paying, but nowhere near the number that was bid if it was done as a turnkey, that one company would do everything. So we were very, very successful in bringing that forward to you. So this evening, what happens in January is all the waste is commingled, both your solid waste and your recyclable materials, and they will go to the waste-to-energy plant, which means the amount of credit that the city and the county gets to the state for recycling efforts is significantly increased. Now, there's also a provision in that agreement that if in the future, by the time 2023 comes, or anytime sooner, if there's another methodology or another way to deal with recycling differently, the city has that opportunity to speak with Waste Pro to talk about going back to the normal way of collecting it with two cans to do it. But at this point, if in fact we were to do that through our negotiations, the recycling component of it, just for collection and disposal, if we did it separately, would be an increase to the current rates of somewhere, we're estimating between $10 and $12 a month. And that was a significant amount. And at the same time, what we took into consideration is that the community is recycling, but they're recycling in a different manner than what we currently are doing. And it is permitted by law. Most cities in Broward, that's the methodology they find. We are still exploring some other options that come January that if in fact there's another way of doing it, we will look at it. We do know there's some recycling centers. But what we have been told by the collectors, as well as those companies that operate the recycling facilities, there's anywhere from 10 to 40% of what they call contaminated recycling. Many people put things in the recycling can that do not belong there. It contaminates the entire amount of it, and they use a percentage, so you don't get the full benefit of it. So there's an awful lot of education in the next three months the city is going to be doing as far as talking about solid waste and how it is handled. As well as the franchise ordinance for solid waste, we will continue to have the bulk pickup. The proposal also remains the same. We're looking at some other variations of it, which we will discuss at the next city commission meeting. So when that element or that aspect is completed, we will then have a second reading on the franchise ordinance, and at that time, we will have the published rates beginning January the 2, 2022. But right now, nothing changes as far as your rate structure regarding the zones, how the residential solid waste is... how the residential solid waste is picked up, how the commercial is handled, and how the bulk is handled. And we believe by contracting directly with a vendor for bulk pickup, we will see significant improvements to that, as well as the new agreement with Waste Pro has significant penalties for the missing of routes, missing of pickup, where we can penalize them financially. So there is more of an incentive for them to keep their zones and pick up those zones. Sometimes there are circumstances that happen that we have to understand that could happen, that may not always fit into that schedule. But we do believe there's going to be a significant improvement in that throughout the entire city. So this evening, that's what commission will be doing as far as the consent item 23 is that third amendment that changes nothing for you as our residents. Item 29 is a first reading on an ordinance awarding a contract for solid waste pickup, commercial. And then item 34 is entering into a contract with Wheelabrader on 41, US 441, just south of 595, for them to accept our waste. And those, and there are provisions in the agreement with Waste Pro. If we need to modify something, then we go back to the table.
Thank you, City Manager. I hope everybody's listening, because I've been getting a lot of emails about the incorrect information. And for me to vote no on these, I'm going to vote yes because of what was just given out by our city manager. It is good for our residents. It is good for our city, and so that's the position I'm going to take. Again, City Manager, thank you. All right, let's get on to our consent agenda, items 1 through 27. What is your pleasure?
I like number 5.
Hold on, who's that?
Castillo.
5, Castillo.
And also...
22B, Castillo. All right, any others? Commissioner?
Mayor, I'd like to have 22...
No, no, Commissioner Castillo.
I'm sorry.
Is that it? All right, Commissioner Schwartz?
22F.
22...
F. Fox Trot, yeah. And 22...
Hold on, hold on, Commissioner. I'm writing. All right, what else, Commissioner?
25.
Mayor?
Yes, Commissioner.
24, please.
Any others, Commissioner?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Hold on, Commissioner Cyple. That was it?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Vice Mayor?
So I'd like to pull item number 10.
10, Vice Mayor. Okay, any others, Vice Mayor?
Number 16.
10, Vice Mayor. Any others? Any others?
And that completes my pulls.
Thank you, sir. All right, no other pulls? All right, I'll entertain a motion for us to approve the consent agenda. Item 1, 2, 3, 4, 6, 7, 8, 9, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 17, 18, 19, 20, 21, 22A, D, 23, 26, and 27. So move.
Mayor, was 16 pulled? I didn't hear you say that.
16 was pulled. Let me check, let me check. 16 was...
It's pulled.
16 was pulled by the Vice Mayor.
Vice Mayor, good.
Sorry, I didn't hear that.
All right, so we'll entertain a motion. So move. Move by Commissioner Castillo. There's a second. Second by Commissioner Cyple. Call a roll, please.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Cyple?
Yes.
Vice Mayor, good.
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Mayor orders?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. All right, round number 5, Commissioner Castillo.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If I may indulge before we move into the consent items, I know that we have several members of the public who had indicated an interest to hear item number 33.
You want to do that now?
Is it okay?
I thought we were going to do that. Okay, sure, I was going to do it after. All right, without any objection, we're going to pull item 23.
33.
33, without objection. Okay, Vice Mayor, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, with your permission, may I read item 33?
Oh, I'm sorry. City Attorney, absolutely.
On the floor, thank you, Mayor and Commission. Item 33, which has been approved without objection by the Mayor and Commission, is the following. It's a motion to adopt proposed resolution number 2021R-33, which is in fact a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Pembroke Pines, Florida, establishing a no-through truck zone pursuant to Section 71.05 of the City's Code of Ordinances, and adding a quote "no-through truck" sign on Southwest 69th Avenue, northbound, approximately 82 feet north of Pembroke Road, Southwest 68th Boulevard, southbound, approximately 50 feet south of Pines Boulevard, and Southwest 64th Way, southbound, approximately 47 feet south of Pines Boulevard, authorizing all necessary actions to implement the intent of this resolution, providing for conflicts, separability, and finally, providing for an effective date. On the floor for consideration, item number 33, 2021R-31. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Do you want to make a motion? You just read it, you want to make a motion?
Well, I would like to make a motion that includes an amendment to the item.
Oh, which is, well, we need a motion, get it on the floor.
Oh, motion to approve, then.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Castillo. Vice Mayor?
Thank you for the coach.
Coach? No, no, no.
So I, I want to say that, you know, this was introduced to this commission, this item in particular, a little bit more than two years ago, and I'm very excited to see it here today. And I know that the residents of the district that's being impacted, or the residents of the community are being impacted by this no-through truck request is, are going to be, are very, very excited as well, too. The only thing that I'm, I'm, I would like to bring more focus to is that Southwest 72nd Avenue was included in the original request for no-through trucks. And certainly, that was part of, of the, the request was partly because Southwest 72nd Avenue some time ago used to have a no-through truck sign as well. And so, you know, what happened through the years, it was lost, and so that was the purpose behind it. So city staff did a great job. They went ahead and, you know, they coordinated and finally got to a point where, yeah, we can get these things in. But however, the county has made, you know, a recommendation, and it's very, very important to understand, it's a recommendation. It's not a mandate, it's not a direction, it's not a requirement, it's not state law, it's not city law, county law. It's just a recommendation to not put a sign on 72nd Avenue. And I would ask my colleagues that we, to recognize that we have the authority to make that 72nd Avenue a no-through truck corridor. And I'm, and I ask for your support. I ask also, too, that we recognize, you know, that this 72nd Avenue has a lot of kind of important things going on. It's, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a huge residential area, and to the west of it, it's the college and it's the airport. And there's no entry point along 72nd Avenue to the college or to the airport. And then when you get to Pines, Pembroke Road, there's no major center, store, or something that would require a large truck to be able to do a delivery. And I can say that from the perspective of the residents, they have indicated to me on many, many occasions that trucks along that road has made it very, very hazardous for them. And, you know, there are certain circumstances that occur that cause the vehicles to have, call them scary moments, you know, with these vehicles and things like that. And so there's no reason to not be able to put a no-through truck on 72nd Avenue, because you do have University Drive, which is just west, and you can have 441. And there, and whatever stores or whatever services that require large trucks, you know, can easily be accessed from those two other locations. And I just ask that my colleagues support the request to include 72nd Avenue, because we can do it.
I sent an amendment, Vice Mayor?
So I'd like to make the amendment to incorporate, to include 72nd Avenue as receiving a no-through truck signage as well.
I'll second it.
Second.
I do have, I do have...
Commissioner Schwartz?
I do have one discussion item on it.
Commissioner Schwartz, go ahead.
Thank you. This resolution, as a result of 72nd, I don't understand why even has to be an amendment. But that's okay, that's why we made the decisions up here. So there's going to be a Wawa on the corner. That's going to be within the next 24 months, which means that they're going to be receiving fuel delivery. And based on the configuration, it's going to be right in, right out, I hope, and I know staff's listening, right in, right out. I don't know if there can be a carve-out specifically for, for that one facility, because otherwise I can't see how the truck gets into that facility without coming in off of 72nd or have the ability to get around egress-wise, Vice Mayor. But outside of that, there's tremendous speeding going on. On 72nd, it has to stop. It is clearly, just to put a sign, this can't be a feel-good, there has to be enforcement. There absolutely has to be enforcement, there has to be an education period. And I'm sure that the same agent will coordinate when these, when these signs get erected. But the last thing we want to do is go through this process and not have the full authority for the city behind us. And we need to educate people. If they don't want to listen, then we need to find them. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Further discussions on the amendment?
Yes, Mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioner Cyple.
Thank you, Mayor. This is, this is really a good idea. It really is. I mean, Pembroke Road is not residential. University is not residential. Pines Boulevard right in there is, while they do have the apartments on the one side, that's not really, I don't consider that to be like residential. 72nd Avenue is residential. It clearly is. They've needed help for, for some time for the speeding and the, just kind of not driving properly down through there. And I think, and I, the truck traffic certainly is scary because even trying to back out of your driveway and seeing a big truck coming is not necessarily a good thing. But as my colleague mentioned, on the, on the, on the northeast corner there, you have the soon-to-be Wawa. What are your thoughts, Vice Mayor, on the southeast and also where that little shopping center is? Is there any need to look at that at all for any type of delivery that would cause, in your thought, a need for a similar carve-out just for that part of it? Or if it's not the same thing, then I'm okay. I just bring it to your attention, because I knew there was something there, and I, I'm not, and I'm, I'm not up to date as to exactly what all goes in and out of there. But when, when it was mentioned about the northeast, just maybe think about that as well, if there's, if there's a need for something like that. But I, I definitely think that including 72nd Avenue should have happened a long time ago. Thank you for bringing it forward, it's a good item. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Well, I, I understand with the Wawa, and I think that there's a poss, an opportunity to have that property designed in such a way that the trucks can come in and get out onto Pembroke Road and/or that short piece of 72nd Avenue that would come out, that they could make a right turn to head east onto Pines Boulevard or get into the turn lane to make the westbound onto Pines Boulevard. However, the, you bring up the, the south, the Pembroke Road area there, and I'm, and I don't know that, and I would need probably the engineer to provide some of that support here.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Schwartz?
Yes, the, if, if we're going to, and I'm speaking through the mayor to the city attorney, if we're going to do a carve-out, certainly during the construction phase of the Wawa and the building of the new church, FPL tree trimming, things along those lines, there needs to be some kind of a, of an easing of restrictions for, for a certain period of time. Perhaps, certainly, the, the construction permit would allow those types of deliveries and that types of equipment to be, you know, brought on. I can't see any other way getting, getting construction materials onto that site without using 72nd. So that's really my only other point, Mayor, that I was thinking of is just to, again, it's about enforcement, education, and shame on the county for even suggesting that we can't do that. But thank you, Vice Mayor, for bringing it forward.
All right. Further discussion on the amendment?
Yes.
Commissioner Castillo?
Thank you very much. And I'm not sure whether, Sam, you're up to speed on this, or whether it's a question for one of our good police command staff that are in the back. But when we talk about no-through traffic, and that's, and that's, that's what we're discussing, correct? No-through traffic.
No-through truck.
No-through truck, excuse me, no-through trucks. My recollection of through trucks means a truck going through an area that doesn't have any, for lack of a better word, business in the area. So it would not exempt, certainly wouldn't exempt, a fire truck, and it wouldn't exempt a, a post office truck, and it wouldn't exempt UPS or any, any Amazon who's delivering to somebody. There will be trucks in this area, furniture delivery. There will be trucks in this area that have business in this area. What, what, what no-through trucks means is that if you happen to be on Pembroke Road and you want to get to Pines Boulevard quickly or to Sheridan Street quickly, you don't use that street, you know, to get there. You go, you go to, you go to University. Is that basically right? Because, can you come forward and, and let that, and let that be heard? Because I wouldn't want people to think there aren't going to be trucks on 72nd Avenue.
Evening, Chief.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening, Captain Shempano, Police Chief. That is correct. This is designed to stop unneeded through traffic of trucks that are coming through an area that's probably residential in this case.
So that said, we don't really have to do carve-outs or anything else. If you have a visitor in the area, and if you, if one of your, if one of your police officers should pull a truck over and say, "This is a no-through truck area, what are you doing here?" "Oh, I'm delivering to the Joneses' house. They, they're getting this new coffee table."
That's correct.
That's allowed.
Right.
Or if they're, if they're delivering gasoline to the Wawa, that's allowed.
Correct.
Or if it's a dump truck that's bringing fill into the area of, where the Wawa, I'm just, I'm inventing things now, that's allowed. So if they have business in the area, they're allowed to use the road, is that correct?
That's correct.
So Vice Mayor, I'm not sure if you, if...
No, if I may speak?
Go ahead, Vice.
So you're, you're correct.
Okay.
In the sense that, because it is spoken to in the ordinance, where it speaks to, trucks are prohibited except trucks traveling to or from a place abutting the zone, which place would otherwise be inaccessible by a truck.
So, so I wouldn't want, I'm, I'm saying this in support of your item. I don't want anyone in the community to think, or to call any one of us and says, "You guys put up these signs," which you should be able to do, "and, and I see trucks there." That's, there will be trucks on 72nd Avenue. What, what we're prohibiting is through traffic.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Or landscaping, that's all allowed.
Mr. Mayor, if you can, if you will?
Yes, City Attorney.
Just for, a comment for the record through the, for the chief and for the Vice Mayor, and he's correct, by the way, as are you, Commissioner Castillo. The ordinance provides for the, the no-through trucks. This resolution is a, an outgrowth of the ordinance that requires the significant, that the signage issue implements the code. So the code exists, and, and police and code, understand what the code specifically says. This is simply the mathematical computation instead of locating those signs. And that's what this resolution does. And by amendment, theoretically, you'll add Southwest 72nd Avenue.
Okay. Everybody clear on that?
Yes.
All right, speakers that want to speak to the item, do you want to speak on this amendment, or you want to wait until the item itself? Mr. Corrin, what is your answer? Mr. Corrin? Come forward, sir. The question is, do you want to wait for the item or do you want to speak on the amendment?
Well, we're going to vote on the item.
The amendment comes first, Mr. Corrin, and then we vote on the item as amended. Then you can speak on that. The amendment comes first, Mr. Corin, and then we vote on the item as amended, then you can s- speak on that.
And the amendment is to include Seventy Second Avenue.
Correct. All right? All right, and we got that clear. So on the amendment.
Mr. Corin, the mic, please. Mr. Corin.
No, I'm gonna call you back up, I'm, I'm gonna call you up for the item. Mr. Corin, I'm gonna call you up for the item. I'm gonna call you up for the item. We're just gonna vote for the amendment now. Okay. City, uh, uh, City Clerk, call a roll, on the amendment, please.
To add, Mr. Mayor, to add Southwest Seventy Second Avenue to the resolution.
That is correct.
For signage purposes.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Good?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Commissioner Seifel?
Yes.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Mayor Ordus?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, now, on the item as amended, Mr. Corin, please come forward and you can speak on him, you have three minutes. I have a, a list of people that wanna speak and you'll have three minutes. Not three and a half. Good evening, sir. You had it before. Need a name and a.
There we go.
Name and address.
George Corin, six, seven, five, one, Southwest Eleventh Street, Pembroke Pines. Uh, just like to make some comments, actually. The, uh, the signage request was reviewed by a county traffic engineer. And, uh, they said a field review was conducted. And, uh, like stated before, the signage for Seventy Second was not recommended. I'd just like to say, why would trucks be allowed to traverse residential streets of two lanes? Is it not a safe practice to route truck traffic away from such areas? Now, I realize we've kinda debunked that a little bit by saying, yes, there will be some truck traffic there, we know, we know that. But people are getting run off the road by eighteen-wheelers, car haulers, soda trucks, water trucks, tanker trucks. My neighbors and I, we face this on a daily basis, and this is why it's so necessary. And it's gonna be more complicated as the county goes through with their Bicycle Connect project.
Mm-hmm.
The traffic lanes are gonna shrink by one foot and they're gonna add bicycle lanes on each side. So that would make a bad situation worse. So I feel we need to stick within our rights and stick to our guns and just reject what the county has said and go through as amended with this item.
Thank you, Mr. Corin. Okay, Mr. Marcus, you wanna speak? Mr. Marcus, you wanna speak? Did you wanna speak on this item?
Yeah.
Okay, come forward. Who else do I have, uh, City, my, uh?
Good evening, members of the commission.
Hold on, let me. City Clerk, I had two more after that.
Yes, Mayor, you had Carlos Marcos and Judith Pritchard.
Okay.
To speak on that.
Mr. Marcus, go ahead.
Yes. My name is Carlos Marcos, good evening, members of the commission, I'm at four twenty-one, Southwest Seventy Second Avenue. For twenty years, I seen a lot of gas trucks, eighteen-wheelers pass by my house. And they go, they're breaking branches, they don't have the clearance and the trees. Uh, we have a lot of newer, younger families moving into our Seventy Second area and it's, we like to keep it a residential street, not a, uh, a freeway for trucks to go through and access other sides. Like, um, Mr. Good said, uh, there is access on major streets like Pines Boulevard, University Drive, Pembroke Road, that can access the other side. Um, we really need to keep the big trucks out of our neighborhood because it will attract more families, it will attract safety, and we like to keep our young ones happy in our neighborhood. And I thank you, Mr. Good, for your, for your position. Have a great day.
Thank you, Mr. Marcus. Okay, Ms. Pritchard? Need your name and address for the record, please.
Um, I'm here because.
Name and address for the record, please.
Can you hear me?
Yes, name and address for the record, please. Name and address for the record.
Judith Pritchard, Mayor, Pembroke Pines, Street Place, Room Two Four.
Okay, thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good evening.
Um, I'm here because, seven hours ago, I joined an organization called Citizens Police Academy and became acquainted with, um, few people that have also joined that, including Ms. Jara, um, Marcos. I tell you, I didn't even realize the village was there, I'm a holding pigeon. I stay exactly where I'm at, the joke is that Jara gets lost taking the trash out. And that's not, that's not a joke, it's the truth. So I'm kind of in my own little world, my own little neighborhood. But when I discovered that my primary care doctor was on Pembroke Road, I started noticing something. I would leave my home and take University to Pembroke Road, go over to my doctor, go the same way back, the same way back, and home, the holding pigeon. But then I discovered Mr. Marcos and he's on Seventy Two Avenue. So I would visit him and his wife now and then and also patrol that area. And I realized something, I started becoming very aware of this. When I leave my doctor on Sixty-Five Avenue, Pembroke Road, I get behind a big truck a lot of times. And instead of going to University, they go up Seventy Second Avenue, I follow them, they make a left, they go over to University and go west. Why don't they go up University? They're telling me. But that has also brought to my attention the thickness of asphalt, which is something that's not many women care about. But on our straight highway, there's a little perimeter road and it now says, no, no trucks. And I came up to the city council because we had eighteen-wheelers coming in there. It's one thing with UPS, it's Washington, FedEx and Amazon, but eighteen-wheelers, and I know, Mr. Mayor, that you're well aware of the fact that they sometimes have come through there and parked in back of the Pines Middle School, we have taken care of that, thank you. That is happening again on Seventy Second Avenue, you can follow them up. Why do they go west? Because they're going west. They don't wanna go up University, it's too much trouble. So they take the little side road. There is a big difference in the level of asphalt from our Seventy Five to the, to the Street, the Chindavon. And if they don't have no Tony Street, they're just doing it on asphalt, they're just gonna pay for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pritchard, appreciate it. All right, City Clerk, no further discussion, call a roll, please.
Vice Mayor Good?
Yes.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Commissioner Seifel?
Yes.
Mayor Ordus?
Yes.
Motion passes.
For the back of the mayor, Commissioner, current number is thirty-four, thirty-seven fifty-five for the record, Mayor.
Thank you, City Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor.
Run, item five, City Attorney, if you'd read it into the record, please.
I'll read it. Motion to transmit the Affordable Housing Market Assessment in the city of Pembroke Pines, Florida, prepared by Multi-Mini Linux, January, uh, June third, twenty twenty-one, to the Broward County Planning Council with a favorable recommendation as a method, uh, which may be utilized to address the provision of affordable housing on consent agenda.
Does it second?
Second.
Okay, second by Commissioner Seifel. Go ahead, Commissioner, um, Castillo.
I bring this, I bring this item up because, uh, I had some, I had some discussion with, uh, a good friend, Mike Stam. The, uh, the report, uh, uh, was written in a somewhat, uh, difficult to understand and not very straightforward way. And I discussed that with, with, with our, uh, with our good director and he's, he's providing some additional, uh, documentation to that item. But I asked him, I said, you know, I, uh, I'm a, I'm a city, I'm a county commission-appointed member of the Broward County Planning Council, I'm the secretary of that board now. And, uh, if I'm asked what the plan is in Pembroke Pines to develop additional affordable housing, what is the plan? And Mike told us about the, the several projects that we know about, because we voted on them, that will provide additional affordable housing for people who are, uh, uh, disabled or mentally ill. We've got, uh, several nonprofits that are coming into the area. Of course, Pembroke Pines has always been a leader in the area of affordable housing. I don't think there's another city in Broward, and few in the region, that has done, that have done as much as we have. I think, I think we have eight hundred units, I believe it is, under, under, uh, management here, uh, in the city. And most of them are senior housing, but we've also, uh, uh, expanded into the area of workforce housing. There is a constant demand for workforce housing units among the, uh, residents of Pembroke Pines, particularly young people who are aging into their, uh, be- in, between their twenties and their thirties, they're working, they're out of college, or they're, they've, they've, their, their careers, if they didn't go to college, have, have, uh, have evolved to where they can and want to, uh, live on their own. They cannot find an affordable place to live within the city. A city that cannot house, uh, its, its young people where those young people, uh, uh, are from, uh, that, that is, that is a textbook definition of lack of sustainability. So I know that we've got an Affordable Housing Committee, I know that, uh, Vice Mayor is serving on it and I think he's, he's doing a great job there. We are gonna have to figure out, uh, what the production schedule is gonna be. I know that there are cities that say, "Well, you know, we have more than our share of affordable housing." And other cities that say, "Well, we have this." And, um, there's, there's a finger-pointing thing that happens between, in Broward County, between, maybe, maybe in mo- in, in most areas, I don't know, uh, between cities and their county, or cities in their state, or cities in the federal government. The bottom line is, the, the, uh, the city has a recipe, a toolbox, a best practice of how this is done. We find land that we control at little or no cost. We pencil out the project based on, um, uh, understandable, um, uh, rents, uh, and, uh, uh, occupancy levels. We build in a res- a, a reserve and we collect those rents and we pay off the debt service. And in twenty or thirty years, depending on what, uh, you know, what the financing tool is, we own it. And I don't know when, uh, you know, we've, we have from time to time had to refinance these things. My constant question, you'll recall, when we refinance is, how much equity are we losing in the refinance? And almost always, I'm being told none, we just refinance the balance to keep the equity. So we've got, we've got some of these assets that, and maybe, Mr. Dodge, you can, you can provide us a report on that, uh, that we probably own outright, uh, or have very little debt left on. So we're collecting these rents and they're going to generate revenue, and that's okay. But we have a need for, um, more of these units. And we don't have a production schedule in Pembroke Pines. I don't wanna hear that, you know, "Well, other cities aren't, aren't doing it, why should we?" We need to be able to take care of our own as best we can. Now, I'm not saying that the only way to do this is for the city to do it. We might be able to enter into private, uh, public-private partnerships to, to, to get it done. I'm saying we don't have a production schedule. I'm saying that all we're doing is talking about it and I haven't seen, uh, uh, an item. So I guess my question is to the city manager, at what point do you think, uh, we will be ripe to have a conversation about creating a production schedule that, uh, can create, uh, uh, these units for residents of Pembroke Pines? People who, uh, were either born here or grew up here or whose parents live here or went to school here or who, who, who work in the city, that have a legitimate connection to Pembroke Pines?
Mr. Dodge?
How can we do that?
Uh, Mayor and Commission, there's a few challenges we have here and that is the availability of real estate. As you know, uh, yes, we do have, and we own eight hundred units of affordable housing, but we have been partnering with, um, other entities that are providing programs of housing, uh, on a specialty basis. However, uh, there may be some opportunities in the future, but we really have to identify those locations and have that discussion with you as, as the commission.
I would, I would appreciate it, Mayor, about a. Just, I would appreciate it if, if, if you did have those discussions. And if you did, uh, begin to do that research and, and bring it to us sooner rather than later, because the residents of Pembroke Pines want it. Where, where can it go? Is it, is, is, uh, is, is the question of where land is available and how it pencils out? And, and whether, whether or not it's viable enough? Uh, affordable housing, in order, in order to make it affordable for workforce people, I'm talking about teachers, I'm talking about healthcare workers, police, firefighters, uh, people in government, people who are, who are, who are working in the private sector and who are making, you know, fifty thousand or less. They're starting off in life and they need a place to live in, in, in the city that they're from. And so I would very much like to see some sort of a, of, of, of a plan put together and.
Mr. Dodge, you can do that?
I took the opportunity to pull this item in order to make that comment.
Mr. Dodge, you can do that? All right, Commissioner Schwartz?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't know if it, I guess, we can look back, going as far back as two thousand and four, maybe, when the cities had an opportunity to do affordable housing projects. If staff can correct me, I'll be happy to have them correct me, but I don't know of anything west of Douglas Road. And I don't know of any support west of Douglas Road. At least majority support of multiple commissions. I think the Vice Mayor may share that view, but certainly I would be interested in hearing from each individual commissioner or where they feel in their district that a project like this would be most welcome.
Can I begin?
Hold on, uh, are you done, Commissioner?
I think we had this discussion. If I, if I'm, if I'm not mistaken, Mayor, it may have been maybe close to a year ago. This isn't new. There wasn't anything difficult for me to read the report. There is something in the report where you can make sixty-five thousand dollars and qualify. So maybe there's a townhouse project west of Douglas Road that maybe just hasn't come out of the ground yet that might actually get support. You know, there's, um, there's, there's a clear need to support the entire community. And for, 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 I grew up in a poor part of town and that's just where they stuck the poor people. All right, and, and Mayor, there is a sense, it's been going on here for a while, that it can only go in one place in this city. And I find it quite offensive. Now, this is the right place and the right time for everything. Certainly, when we, um, when we speak, all of us go out in the community and we hear, the biggest question is, "Oh, I don't want Section Eight near me." Happens all the time, folks, all the time. I don't want those people moving into my neighborhood. I hear it. They're not bashful, they tell me, "I don't want them in my neighborhood." Until we can have that conversation as a community, I don't think there's any report that the manager can bring forward. Until we can actually look back historically of, of where some of these projects have been proposed, what's been the ultimate, um, uh, dispatch of, of city commission action, who voted for what, who said what? To me, that's more important, because in order to move the ball forward, you gotta find out where you came from.
The manager said he's gonna get that for us. All right, any further discussion? All right, call a roll, please, City Clerk.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Seifel?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Good?
Yes.
Mayor Ordus?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. City Attorney? Number?
Number ten. It's, it's not a number, Mr. Mayor.
Good. Item ten.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor.
Item ten is motion to approve agreement between AT&amp;T and the.
Item ten is motion to approve agreement between AT&amp;T and the City of Pembroke Pines to provide a secondary ISP, Internet Service Provider, for a thirty-six month period, with a total annual cost not to exceed twenty-seven thousand dollars, utilizing the AT&amp;T Master Agreement Reference Number MA 14264613UA, pursuant to Section thirty-five point eighteen, point C, point seven, point F, of the City Code of Ordinance.
There's a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Castillo? Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Yes, uh, Mr. Mayor, I, I, uh, I intend to support this item, and I, I really don't have any questions, I just have a comment. I mean, we are currently using Comcast as our, um, Internet Service Provider, and you would think that Comcast would have, um, a reliability that would not require the city to have to get a secondary Internet Service Provider. And it's a little bit disappointing, and I just wanted to express that in the public, that I am disappointed with Comcast, as we are needing backup from AT&amp;T for reliability to run the city.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Further discussion on item ten?
Yes. Yes.
Commissioner Castillo, go ahead.
Mayor Ordis will, uh, will agree. Once upon a time, we had a, a customer service franchise agreement, didn't amount to much, but it made a cable franchise company be responsible to these daisies for customer service. And I remember the days of Adelfi, when they were in Pembroke Pines, and they had to have a, um, um, uh, or was it Adelfia, I think, I forget the name of it. But, uh, they had to have an office in Pembroke Pines, and they had to live up to, uh, certain standards, and when people called and complained, and they didn't get customer service, they came here and we got it done for them, and all that other kinda stuff. Well, so, the, uh, the industry went to Tallahassee, and they lobbied, and they said, "This is a waste. We can provide, uh, we can save, uh, people a lot of money and provide them better or equal customer service, uh, uh, let's eliminate this franchise fee." And so, they eliminated the franchise fee, and now, uh, they get worse service than ever before, and, uh, there's nowhere to turn. What a bargain. So, we now have to, and now it costs us additional money, because we must, we can't not be connected. So, we have to take these steps, which is why I'm supporting it as well. So, I share your frustration, and, uh, it's, it's, uh, it's a statewide issue, and, uh, I get lots and lots of phone calls about, uh, uh, cable, uh, customer service, and frankly, there's very little we can do about it. We don't have that authority anymore.
Thank you. Commissioner, Commissioner Seifel?
No, Mayor, I-
Okay. All right. Any further discussion on item ten? Call and roll, please, City Clerk.
Vice Mayor Good?
Yes.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Seifel?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Mayor Ordis?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right. Item sixteen, Vice Mayor, on a great, great item. I mean, go ahead.
Book two. So, uh, item number sixteen, motion-
Mayor, you're funny.
-to ratify the city manager's approval of the agreement with the Florida Department of State Division of Cultural Affairs for a general support grant to build on an established program of year-round arts and cultural events and arts education at the Frank C. Ordis Art Gallery and Exhibit Hall, the Frank, in the amount of seventy-seven thousand four hundred and seventy-four dollars.
Is there a second?
Mayor, I think it would be appropriate for, I think it'd be appropriate for the entire commission to second that, the item.
Okay, if no objection, we'll do that. Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Great. And so, I, I did pull that for that specific reason. This is one of those items that should not be buried in a consent item, I think this is a very important thing, to let the community know that we have, um, staff that did a wonderful job in, in, in acquiring a grant that allows for us to have at least three events at the Frank, you know, that basically fosters experimentation, creativity, and all those things that we so desperately need at this time. And I just wanna congratulate staff and let the public know that they've done a wonderful job in, in acquiring this grant. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Further discussion? All right, can we have the roll call, please, on item sixteen?
Vice Mayor Good?
Yes.
Commissioner Seifel?
Yes.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Mayor Ordis?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Thank you all, staff, for making the great Art and Culture Board, making a great idea.
At the Frank.
Okay. Item twenty-two B, Commissioner Castillo.
The motion to request, uh, to advertise solicitation, the PT twenty-one dash oh-three, citywide towing service.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by the Vice Mayor, discussion. Commissioner Castillo.
Thank you. All right, go ahead.
Thank you very much. Uh, we have a provider here, uh, that has been serving the city for a long time, A and B towing. Uh, we received a, uh, a, uh, and I understand why it is that, that, that this item is here, and I understand the argument that was taken to bring it here. However, we have since received that, a memorandum from the chief, uh, of police. Chief, could you come forward?
Captain, I'm the police chief.
Thank you, sir. Uh, uh, chief, has A and B towing been doing a good job for the City of Pembroke Pines during the time that they've, uh, served as the, uh, tow truck operator?
Yes, they have.
Uh, chief, uh, is it your view that, uh, having multiple, or the potential of having multiple, um, um, tow truck operators is disruptive to the city, and to your department?
Yes, it is.
Why is it disruptive to your department?
Well, to be honest with you, it's mostly a logistical concern for multiple members of our police department, the records unit, the dispatch center, uh, the officers, the detectives, the crime scene unit, um, depending on how often something were to rotate, to when, to where, we're gonna be potentially sending people to the wrong business-
To pick up their cars at the wrong lots, and that kinda thing?
Correct. Um, we haven't had any, um, need to go beyond one vendor. I've spoken to multiple other police departments, there's only a couple that even use more than one vendor. And one or two of those have switched from multiple to one.
If this commission was, was to, uh, eliminate this item and to renew the contract, as we have the, the right to do, with, uh, with the current, uh, provider, would that be logistically and operationally, uh, beneficial to the department?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Further discussion?
Yes, Mayor.
Item B. Go ahead, Commissioner Seifel.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, chief. Um, uh, I read your, read your memo. I, I just have, um, some concerns, or, I guess it's not really so much that it, it really is kind of a concern. City Attorney?
Yes, ma'am.
The, the, we're, we're looking here to, to approve this request to go out for solicitation, put out a bid out on the street for-
Correct.
...providing these services.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, would it be appropriate that, that a commissioner, that I would be able to, uh, request that certain, um, items be included in the RFP going out? The staff would look at including, um, for example, um, I, I, on my own, have gone to several, uh, of these towing companies' actual lots, and looked at what was there. Um, and I think that that's really important, that, that be a requirement of our staff, to be able to go out and to look at these lots, to look at how they're set up, look at the locations of where they are. Um, I also think that I would like to make sure that we include language in the RFP going out, that, um, all equipment be, uh, be properly owned by the company that is providing the service. I understand that, that there are some pieces of equipment that are, um, sublet out, and while some may argue that that might be a, uh, an efficient or financially good way of doing business, I'm more concerned about the opportunity that may happen that should Pembroke Pines, us, need that piece of equipment that is sublet out, and it's not available because it's somewhere else, as opposed to, um, who we are doing business with, having that equipment available to us. So, so, City Attorney or City Manager, is, uh, is it, uh, is it, is it my opportunity to request that that type of information be made part of the, uh, RFP, RFQ, whatever the bid process will end up being?
City Manager?
Uh, I believe, uh, any, um, additional information the commission would want to add within the RFP process certainly has that prerogative to do tow with the, the vote of the balance of the commission.
And, uh, thank you. And so, City Manager, how would Commissioner Seifel go about making sure that that, uh, information was included in the RFP? And maybe any other additional that my colleagues may have, or that, uh, you know, my, my thought process is still kind of ongoing with this? What is, uh, what's my opportunity to do that, and what would be deadlines for something like that?
City Manager?
All you would need to do is make a motion to what those provisions are that you're looking for, and once that's adopted by the commission, we would modify the solicitation, and we would put it out with those changes.
Okay, so, so then what you're saying is that, um, that as a commissioner, I would not, on my own, be able to say, "I want this, uh, information placed into the, into the bid process, the RFP, RFQ, whatever it would be," that I would have to have, um, commission approval to do that?
It would be, from a logistical point, if every commissioner did that, and then you went out for an RFP, and they were conflicting, then I think there would, there would be a problem with that RFP process.
I'm not sure I understand how they would be conflicting, because-
It would be if your item was to say that all equipment must be owned by the, uh, company putting their proposal in, and another commissioner disagrees with that, or the majority of others do disagree with you, then, uh, any changes to it have always required a vote of the commission. I guess-
Okay.
...the best way of saying it, rather than-
Well, I, I kind of, I kind of understand where you're coming from, City Manager, I guess I would find it hard, um, to understand why any commissioner would not want, um, something included in there that would be more protective for, for us and for our community, such as that kinda language.
They certainly may not, but I believe we need the formality of it, of instructing us, anytime you change the RFP-
So, so what is the timeline, then? Would it be that, right now, that I would make a motion that that be included in there, or would it be at some other point?
If you could do it this evening, if you do not have all your suggestions, you could table it, uh, and bring that back as a future item to go out.
Okay. Okay. Well, Mayor, when you think it would be appropriate, I'd like to make a motion.
You can make an amendment, item B.
Mr. Mayor, just for the record, if I can briefly, to the Commissioner?
Yes.
Inherent within the authority to allow the item to be put on the street for consideration, you have the absolute legal right, consistent with the manager's conversation, to amend, modify, or alter the proposal. So, from the standpoint of the Mayor's direction, again, tailing the matter or otherwise doing it, deceiving by amendment is in your prerogative legally from the dais, but as a commission item, not individually.
All right, Commissioner Seifel, an amendment.
Okay, well, I, I, so I'm making an amendment to-
Your motion is to amend?
To item B?
Yes.
To item, uh-
Item twenty-two B, to provide additional conditions or requirements.
Item twenty-two B, I'm making an amendment that, um, uh, language be included in the RFP, um, for, um, site visits, required site visits by staff, by city staff, and that, um, all necessary equipment be owned by, um, that particular company that is chosen.
Is there a second to the amendment?
I'll second it for discussion.
Second by Commissioner Schwartz. Discussion on the amendment.
Yes.
Commissioner Seifel, Commissioner Castillo.
Thank you very much.
I thought maybe I would get the opportunity, Mayor, given that I was the second.
What's that?
Can I weigh in, since I was the second, for discussion?
No, 'cause he, he asked for permission to speak. You'll, I'll get you. You don't have to speak when you're second.
Okay.
I'm running the meeting, I got it.
You're doing a good job.
Thank you, very good. Commissioner Castillo, go ahead.
Thank you very much. Chief, I, we, we've just heard, we've just heard, uh, on amendment to this item. Actually, I was gonna make a motion to cancel this and to renew the contract, which is what the, 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 the police department has just requested. Uh, but going down the road of this, I, myself, have no difficulty with the site visit part. I think that that's a good thing, and frankly, I'd be surprised if that hasn't already been happening, but to the extent that that's the case, that's the case. Are you aware of any situation where, uh, necessary equipment that we have needed to do towing services was not provided by the firm provider?
I'm not aware of that. I don't know if, over the years, we've had any, I mean, the only thing I could, would think of is a very, you know, heavy vehicle wreck, multiple heavy vehicles, maybe-
Right.
-semi-trucks or something.
But they've been able to handle it, right?
They usually, I believe, subcontract that out if they really need assistance and pay the difference, but I'm not sure about that.
And, and it, and, and the service gets provided?
Correct.
So, I, I, I honestly don't know that if, if, it would be a different story if the service wasn't getting provided for that reason, but I, I have difficulty, I, I just have difficulty, um, um, inventing a solution to a thing that does, that isn't a problem. If, if, if we had that experience in Pembroke Pines-
Commissioner, my-
I'm sorry. I would have, I would have difficulty-
Your light's not on. That's why it's not hearing you. Your light's not on.
My light is.
Your microphone, your microphone light doesn't seem to be on.
It says speak.
Okay.
Can you guys hear me?
Not so good.
No. Is somebody back there that can fix this? AT&amp;T.
AT&amp;T.
Mayor, do you have it off there?
No, I don't. I do now. Put, push it, push your button.
He pushes it.
Nope, you're not coming up.
I'll just speak up.
All right.
So, uh, I don't know, I don't know that we've had this, a problem before, so, for, for me to interfere with how business, providing good service, uh-
So, is the case here, uh, to interfere with how they're, oh, no, it's, how they, how they organize their business, there would need to be a reason for that, based on our need, that we have this need, and that's, that's just not been an issue. But I don't have a problem with the site visits, and I don't, I, I think that the site visits should be happening now, as a, as a, who is the contract manager for this contract? Do you know?
Uh, it could be the police department, I'm not sure.
Okay. Uh, is your contract manager making site visits to this location, uh, now? I mean, that's easy to fix. I mean, whoever has the contract, there should be site visits to that location. So, I, I mean, I, I just think that that's, that goes with that, that's something you, you can do, I don't think the commission needs to do that.
Correct.
My issue, my issue is more that, my issue is more that, I don't wanna put this out on the street, we have, we have a provider now, we can, my understanding, Mr. City Attorney, is we have, we have the legal right to extend this contract, correct? Isn't that, isn't that the, the why this came before us?
City Attorney?
Yes, sure, that's a yes.
Okay, so, we've got, we've got a contractor familiar with our city, who's been doing a great job, why are we going out to bid when we don't need to? Nothing, it, what, is it, is it a legal requirement that we go out to bid right now, or is it just, you know, at, at, at all preference?
City Attorney?
Mr. Mayor, if I can, to the Commissioner, the answer is that during the course of the commission meeting at which this item was discussed, there was a conversation conducted by the commission to look to the street to get a, uh, library or catalog of available vendors, uh, as a matter of consideration.
I think, I think that one of the ways to get a library or catalog is to do a, uh, a qualification request, so that we can pre-qualify these vendors. And when the RFP goes out, we send it out to the pre-qualified, uh, uh, list, that's how you develop a library. But, uh, an operational library, that the police chief has said, would be disruptive to his department. So, if, if we wanted to do a pre-qualification of tow truck companies qualified to bid when we go out to bid, I think that's great. But right now, we have a vendor who we can renew. Why wouldn't we do that, when they're providing a good service? And when the chief is saying he wants that for his department? So, I, I don't wanna, I don't wanna, I don't wanna stop on, on, on another commissioner's motion, but at some point, at some point, I wanna make the motion that we just award the contract and move on.
Mayor?
Okay, Commissioner Schwartz.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Schwartz?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I'm, I'm, I'm just trying to gather my thoughts, because when it comes to procurement, you can't cherry pick whether you go out on the street or to keep a twenty-year relationship there, people you can count on every four years to be there for you. There, there is an opportunity for us to find out what the market will bear. It'd be foolish not to go out. The chief knows how much respect I have for him and the agency. The, the, the recommendation from the chief is, 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 is expected- The, the recommendation from the Chief is, 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 is expected, but you don't know what you don't know. Carl Springs, they have multiple vendors, I don't, maybe two, I don't think they have more than, more than that. Um, I spoke to the manager weeks ago and, um, logistically it can be done because staff is the one who chooses. It'd be done on a rotating, rotating schedule on a weekly basis, not a daily basis, that would be insane. Maybe even a monthly basis, but I looked at Chief and the, and the manager worked that out, they wanted to being multiple vendors. But here's the beautiful thing about it. If a vendor fails to perform, they're out. Not stuck, Comcast. We have options and when you have, when you have two competing industry...
All right.
Trying to provide the best possible customer service, you raise the bar on both ends. As far as site visit goes, I remember when this came up a few years ago, um, Chief Bermudez made a, a presentation, I think we threw the, you know, I think we threw the fish back in the lake, we got fish back again and there was a presentation about site visit. I'm not really interested in a, in a, um, um, in a report, I'm interested in photos. I wanna see it. I wanna see it through the eyes of the, of the committee making the selection. I wanna see the conditions, the day of, I wanna see what the conditions are.
All right, on the amendment, Tush.
On the amendment, on the, I'm, I'm, I wanna support, I wanna support Commissioner Cyphal's amendment. I'm making the case as to why I think it's important that we all should do that.
Mm-hmm.
You can't go out and say, well, you know, we got this trash thing, there's minority businesses, there's a smaller guy out there, we never know unless we go out and try, and then, well, you know, the towing guys, they're okay, we'll keep them. It's inconsistency, you can't do that. It's bad government. It's no reflection, it's no reflection whatsoever on, on the service currently being provided. It's our duty to go out to bid. It's been twenty years, there's been law change, the City Attorney gave us, uh, the rundown on that. So, Mayor, um, I'm going to support the amendment and I hope...
All right.
We can get full support on the motion as amended. Thank you.
Point of information? Go ahead, Commissioner Castillo, point of information.
How long has this contract been in place?
City Attorney or City Manager?
First. I can't answer the question, uh, after you know.
Mr. Mr. Asap, how long has the contract been in place?
Twenty-five years.
Twenty-five years.
Okay. All right, all right, you can't talk from the audience, I just wanted to ask you.
Mayor?
Yes?
Mayor?
Yes?
I have a, uh...
No.
Legal question.
No.
I'm sorry, I have a legal question that pertains to the item.
You have a point of clarification, City Attorney?
Yes, I do have a point of clarification and...
Mr. Cyphal, point of clarification.
Thank you. City Attorney?
Yes, ma'am.
There was discussion and I, I wanna make sure that I'm clear on this. There was just, part of my discussion had two items to it. One was, uh, the site visit and one was the, um...
Ownership of the equipment.
Availability of the heavy equipment.
Correct.
It is my understanding, and, and I want you to clarify for me, that there is law or there is language that says, um, distance and how long, how far away yards can be from service areas. So, my question is, does that, please clarify what that is, and then also, does that then pertain to all equipment? Does equipment need to be within that range or can equipment be forty miles away and be brought in? I'm not clear on that and so I'm asking Legal to clarify that.
City Attorney?
Mr. Mayor, if I can to the Commissioner, you raise a very important point. The good news is, is that in the context of this specific service, the towing service to the citizens and residents of the city controlled by the City Commission, controlled by the City of Pembroke Pines as a franchise, you get to control those answers and you do so by virtue of your ordinance that controls the towing in the city and your procurement code. So, before you this evening, you have the item which is to go back to the street to reopen the conversation and see what's out there in the context of proposers who can perform this service. Uh, your amended motion is to add some additional requirements and conditions to the bid proposal, to the RFP package proposal, including the site visit option and ownership. In the context of the service area, that's a decision that's made by the Commission in the context of how many sectors you have, how many, uh, users you have in the city, et cetera, which are controlled by the Commission. There's no state statute about which I'm familiar that would regulate for you those, those areas. You regulate your own franchise area by, by your own franchise ordinance. So, it is controlled by the, by the city.
Okay, Commissioner Cyphal?
Maybe I didn't ask correctly. It was always my understanding that there was, there was mileage distance for service areas. Is that, and that that was, that was either at Broward County level or it was the state level and that's what I'm not clear, clear on.
I, if, if you will, Mayor, to the Commissioner, if, if Mr. Gomes has a better answer than mine, I'm happy to defer it to him through, through the manager to that discussion, but...
Mr. Gomes?
Um, I'm not aware of any specific on that issue to answer your question.
Let's try and find out.
Good evening, Mark Gomes, procurement director. Um, like Sam said, I'm not a hundred percent sure of a certain requirement on a service distance. We do have a requirement in our bid package that the yard would be, uh, ten miles, uh, from, uh, pretty much the center of our city. In addition, just to clarify, another comment that was made earlier, the current contractor, contract with the current vendor was, uh, awarded in 2018, so that's a new contract from that period when we went out to bid in 2017.
Okay, so, Mr. Gomes, so what you're saying is then that in our own ordinance, we put in language that had a ten-mile radius, is that what you're saying to me?
No, in the drafted bid package, uh, I'm not sure about the ordinance, any requirement on a distance, but in the bid package that's drafted attached, uh, the vendor would have to have a yard that's within ten miles from the center of the city.
Does that also then pertain to equipment? Equipment would have to be in the yard and available there, so if in fact, my, my item of owning all of the equipment, if it's not owned by them and not in their yard, then that doesn't qualify, would that be correct assumption?
Well, so generally, uh, equipment, uh, for most of these towing contractors, they have it located in areas, they're not just sitting at a yard, uh, throughout the day, they're roaming the streets in, in the areas that they serve.
Okay, I'm talking about more specific, not just your normal tow trucks that you see out on the road that are doing the everyday service. I'm talking about the more specifically, the heavy industrial that, and, and Chief and I, and I understand absolutely where you're coming from, but my concern again on that, and that's why I put it in, into my, my request for requirement, was if in fact, God forbid, we have one of those horrible accidents that you alluded to with, you know, big rigs and what have you, and there's, that equipment is not available, it's just not, what do we do? And that is a big concern of mine, although we don't have a big history of it, it's kinda like, for me, it's kind of like an insurance policy. You, you know, you hope you never have to use it, but if you have to use it, you're darn glad that you've got it there. And so that's what I'm not clear on is, is this heavy duty equipment that when it would be needed, if it's, if it's thirty miles from here, forty mi, you know, a trip, why are we allowing that when it should be part of what the service i- is providing for us? The vendor is providing for us, that's my, that's my concern. And again, I'm not, that I'm trying to tell someone how they should do their business or how they should run their business. My concern is what's best for my city and for what would happen in my city and that's where I'm coming from on this. So, City Attorney, given what, uh, Mr. Gomes just said, we, we've set, we have set this ten-mile...
Correct.
Uh, radius ourselves...
Yes.
And have lived with that for all this time or whatever. So, does that pertain then to that ten-mile radius, does it pertain, pertain only to sites or does it pertain to equipment on site?
City Attorney?
Again, I, the issue of regulation is in the hands of the Commission and it's regulated by virtue of how you, you bid out the service. If you require it to be ten miles or fifteen miles or a lesser amount of miles, I'm not aware of any provision of state law that would regulate how you make that decision.
Okay.
It is a city franchise, not a county franchise, not a state franchise, you control the conclusion. You have a current franchisee, their contract is ex, re-executed in 2018, et cetera, you know that that's an existing relationship. Um, they bid based upon those conditions at that time. The, the offering that you have this evening on your amended motion is legally within the prerogative of the Commission to do that and, and you, you have good public health and safety reasons to do so in the context of making that motion. So, it's a legally valid motion under the, under the rules and if passed by the Commissioners would be an amendment to the proposed item twenty-two B.
Okay.
And thank you, thank you, thank you, Mayor.
Hi, Vice Mayor.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, I just, so speaking to the amendment, the, um, the onsite visitor, site visit, um, you know, I, I certainly agree to that and, uh, it was actually elevated by Commissioner Schwartz when he spoke about having photos of those sites so that, you know, there's, you know, you can show what, to others what it looks like. Cause I was gonna speak to the fact about doing, uh, standard checklist or something of that nature. The, um, the, the other thing is the ownership, um, issue of, of the units and so I, I, I'm sitting here listening and I'm, and I'm not quite, I just need a little bit more clarification in regards to what your intentions were. Is that a, a qualification that if you don't have it, you don't get in or is it a scoring element that if you have it, you get max points, if you don't have it, you get zero?
Commissioner?
Can I respond, Mayor? May I respond to him?
Yeah, Commissioner.
Yeah, it, it was more that it would be in, in, um, the qualificat, you know, the, the scoring parts of it because I think that, that while I, again, don't want to tell someone how they need to run their business, I need to know that, that my city gets the best protection available for there. And so, there should be, there should be a column with scoring for something like that where a zero to, to nothing, you know, a nothing to something or whatever, you have or you don't have kind of thing. So, yes, I'm glad you clarified that because that, that was what my thought was, but I guess I, I wasn't clear about that.
No, that's good.
The site business, I think, should be absolute requirement and, and photos should be brought back and, and all that, it'll be eye-opening stuff, yes.
Sure.
Thank you.
And that makes it very much a lot easier for me to digest that then because, um, you know, I, I agree to the scoring of the ownership, but I also, um, wanna say that that issue in and of itself also lends to the argument about having a pool of, for services of these vendors because one might have it, one might not, you know? So, I mean, it just, it just again lends itself to the argument of having more than one vendor, um, because they may or may not have something that's necessary at that particular time, whether it's a frequent need or infrequent need, it's still nevertheless there. Um, those are, are, are on the amendment, Mr. Mayor. I have other comments I'd like to make on the main item.
All right, um, let me, before I bring up our next speaker, thank you, Mr. Gomes. I just wanna say, I'm, for twenty-five years, we've had the same one towing company and with a pretty good record, so I would support that rather than go out and a multitude of towing companies. But I'd like to have Mr. Rodriguez Ospina, if you could come up.
Is he gonna just speak on the amendment or is he gonna speak on the main?
The amendment.
All right, cause there's a lot of conversation on the main.
Mayor, do you have a question for Mr. Gomes when, at the appropriate time?
What's that?
I have a question for Mr. Gomes.
All right, go ahead, no, no, go ahead, sir. Name and address, please. You're gonna speak on the amendment?
My name is Rodrigo Ospina, twenty-three thirteen Southwest fifteen nine Avenue, West Park. I'm the owner and president of, uh, Basic Corporation AMTowing. Uh, on behalf of the company, uh, I, I would like to, I have something written here, but I would like to change what's, what I was gonna say, I would like to approach some of the comments that appear that, uh, about the amendment. So, the company's been servicing the city of Pembroke Pines for over twenty years, we've been renewing the contract, we've been, I'll forbid, RFPs, anything, and if we keep getting the contracts because our service is outstanding, we're one of the, uh, oldest in tradition towing companies in Broward County. Now, to answer a couple of questions that, uh, I'm sorry if I feel a little irritated, uh, Commissioner Cyphal, the ownership of vehicles on the towing, uh, it is impossible to have an eighty million dollar fleet, that's all the equipment you will need to recover anything that you have. You will have to have a helicopter, you will have to have a boat, you have to have a submarine, you will have to have multiple and multiple pieces of equipment that is unlikable that anybody in the country or even the world will have it. That's why we support, uh, some of our companies, that's why we, in the contract, it is included, uh, that we can, uh, have subcontractors that will have the equipment. In the towing business, there's multiple companies that specialize in heavy or medium or low, uh, just single duty like a small car. Having this piece of equipment is completely impossible. We haven't failed in over twenty-five years to provide services to the city of Pembroke Pines. There is, there is no such a thing as having the truck within ten-mile radius. We are actually located, we're the closest towing company to the city of Pembroke Pines. We have a heavy equipment truck parked twenty-four-seven in our yard, but that doesn't mean we're gonna need three rotators to have three tankers that crash. It, it, it hasn't happened in twenty-five years. We have tankers that crash, that's why we support, we get the support from all the towing companies on the equipment because they specialize on heavy equipment. What we do mostly is we tow, uh, city vehicles, we tow the city vehicles, fire department, police department vehicles, we tow that for free for the city of Pembroke Pines. That would bring me to my next question to Vice Mayor Good. Last, uh, two Commissions ago, you said that now that we don't bring a franchise fee, we don't bring anything to the table to the city. Yes, we do, we support multiple causes and multiple charities and multiple events through the city. So, we have an aggregated value to the city of Pembroke Pines, we've been supporting charter school, tow truck events, their programs, police programs, fire programs, golf tournament, and you name it, we've been supporting that. So, in top of the franchise fee and towing all the city vehicles for free, we also provide a service to the community. On going onto the contract, three years ago, we bid it on a nine-year contract, I used to pay two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Over these twenty-five years, so you guys get a number, I've paid the city of Pembroke Pines well over eight million dollars in franchise fee. I repeat, eight million dollars. Now, the legislation changed, I didn't change the legislation, I bid it with a contract three years ago, based it on a nine-year contract, it was three years with two three-year extensions on it. The legislation changed, now the city has to do an amendment because they can recollect the franchise fee from a towing business. Now, as, uh, Vice Mayor Good said, I don't bring anything to the table, the AMTowing doesn't bring any different to the table. We do bring something different with the table, we have a long relation with the city, a business relation we haven't failed one. And let me bring something back, two Commissions ago, the Commissioners were talking about the companies that provided services for the city that were affected through COVID. I have three months where I have nothing but losses and I still pay my twenty thousand dollar franchise fee a month for the city through COVID. I didn't fire any employees, I had to apply to the PPP and I had to apply to an SBA loan in order for me to survive and don't let any of my guys go. So, it really irritates a vendor when I hear that the Commissioner wants, the Commissioner wants to go ahead and renew some of the contracts for whoever handles the management of the city center, this or a company, this or a company, but when it comes to towing, okay, let's get a pool of vendors. I'm okay with getting a pool of vendors, don't get me wrong, but why we don't get a pool of vendors, once my contract is up, because of the contract stage, as long as both parties agree and if everything is okay, we can move forward to, you know, amend, to continue the contract. Now, there's some questions about the yard, uh, maybe I don't have anybody that goes to a yard and check monthly, but I have police personnel and fire personnel every single day at my yard. So, if there was something wrong with the yard, somebody will already raise a flag on it. Owning the equipment, it is completely impossible in the industry, Mr. Cyphal, because it's, it's basically, I just did the calculation, I, I need a chopper, I need a pilot, it's, it's impossible. When there's cars in the canals, BSO, uh, let Pembroke Pines Police use their helicopter and they look at the cars. We go out there and dive, so I'm the diver, I'm actually the one who jumps into a lake and get the cars out of there. Sometimes we need boats, it, it, it is impossible for a towing company to have everything. Why we use subcontractors is because they specialize in heavy equipment, hazardous with material, we have some chemical stuff that we have to hire companies, I cannot have a chemical division, it will cost me millions, I don't have that. So, I'm here just to have the Commission reconsider the option to that. I understand what Commissioner Schwartz is saying about maybe somebody else will elevate the level of, of, of the current vendor. I have a high standard, I ha, I don't have one percent complaints on my services and I'm feel proud of that, one percent, I don't have a one percent complaint on my services. So, listening to this, it's just, oh, basically, I don't bring money to the city, I don't, I'm useless to the city, that really, I, I take that personally, so it just hurts me to see that I've been giving everything I have to please and to have a high standard, that's why city management recommends, procurement recommends, fire and police are recommending, but the Commission is all, let's have a pool of vendors, let's bring somebody else into fire and police are recommending, but the commission is all, let's have a pool of vendors. Let's bring somebody else into the table. Which I think, uh, I think is a mistake on logistic reasons and I had a relation with the city. And that's basically what I have to say. Thanks.
Vice Mayor on the amendment?
Mayor, if I could.
No, no, Vice Mayor gets more on the amendment.
No, I, I'm, I'm all right on the amendment. I, I want to speak on the main motion when it comes.
On the amendment, Commissioner Schwartz?
On the amendment.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Gomes?
Mr. Gomes? Commissioner Schwartz has a question on the amendment, sorry.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening.
This 10-mile selection, I suppose, um, our city, from east to west, are two different cities and it, it could take you twice as long driving on the west side of the city in the same distance as you could on the east. And then if we go 10 miles south, we're in Dade County. So exactly where's this radius going here?
So if you, uh, look at the last page in the attachment, uh, on the agenda, it actually shows a map and the radius, um, so that kind of give you a.
It, it's not within the backup. It's in the thought process of why that was chosen is what, is, is my question.
So, um, it, it's to give a, a distance in which we can have enough vendors participate in, uh, providing the service or bidding on the contract. Uh, if you limit the distance.
Are we, oh man, I, I hope we're not writing bids, RFPs to, to, to create a scenario that we're not getting the best level of service. It can take you 25 minutes to go from US 27 to get to I-75 at 6 o'clock in that. So to go into Dade County and to think that somehow they're going to get to I-75 and Pines Boulevard any faster than somebody in West Park is ridiculous. I, I just got to be honest with you. It, it, it just doesn't make, it, that, that doesn't, I can't see that being a part of the, the R, the, the, the reasoning for, for a pool of contractors. Now, if you say that the equipment has to be within 10 miles, now you have my attention. Because anyone can get a P.O. box at University and Pines Boulevard and say that they're Pines business and qualify under, under the, under the scope of being within a 10-mile radius. We see it all the time. You know, opportunity comes up, they move in for a few months to get the bid. They don't get the bid, they leave. Meanwhile, it's just a storefront. That's why I need photos of what we're getting. You see what I'm saying?
So, so just to clarify, they would have to have their storage yard within that location. So it wouldn't just be a business address or anything like that. But if you'd like to amend that and have a different.
I was looking for clarification and, and again, uh, Vice Mayor, um, that's all I got, so.
All right. On the amendment, further discussion. Call and roll on the amendment. City Clerk, please.
Commissioner Cyclo?
Yes.
Commissioner Castillo?
No.
Vice Mayor Good?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Mayor Ordus?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, uh, on the motion, Commissioner, uh, and the motion as amended, Vice Mayor.
Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to make a substitute motion.
Commissioner, uh, Vice Mayor, continue on with your questioning as from the, uh, a motion as amended.
Yes, Mr. I, I just want to have my opportunity to speak to the main item.
Commissioner?
Yes, I'd like to make a substitute motion.
Commissioner, you're not recognized. I've recognized the Vice Mayor of finish his question.
Okay.
Okay. Vice Mayor, please.
So I, um.
Commissioner, your microphone, please. Thank you.
Am I okay?
You're good.
You're okay? Okay, thank you. So a, a, again, you know, there is reference about why, why, why are we here today? And again, I just want to remind, um, the comments that I made certainly and the reason why I voted, the way I voted in order to bring this item, uh, to, um, to a bid process is because the law's changed. I'm sorry. You're right. Law's changed. We didn't change it. Vendor didn't change it. The state changed it. And in that change, they made a dramatic change or a matic, uh, uh, impact, uh, which was a franchise fee that actually comes to the city, which is a direct value to the general fund of the city. So I'm not certain about business relationships and I appreciate that. I'm certain it's been well received and well appreciated over all these years. But it was a franchise agreement paid to the city's general fund to help offset the cost, uh, to residents.
Um, point of information?
Point of information, Commissioner Castillo.
I believe that Mr. Rodrigo said that he was providing certain, um, um, as a, as a, um, I'm not exactly sure how to say it, but that he was going to be providing a fee to the city anyway. Mr. Rodrigo, can you come forward and, and clarify that? Vice Mayor's point, which I'm trying to clarify now, is that you're not paying any franchise fee because the law changed. Is that, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
All right, but did you offer, did you offer in the contract discussion to pay a, what were you calling it, Sam?
It, it's technically a community benefits.
A community benefit? Were you paying some additional amount of money, uh, uh, that, uh, might have been in the past a franchise fee?
Yes, we usually, uh.
Okay.
Okay.
What, talk to us about what that was.
We usually, what we do is we usually, uh, contribute to some of the campaigns and some of the charities and some of the sports plans and kids. Uh, we've been contributing up to $25,000 a year as a budget. And I proposed that I was going to, uh, contribute up to, uh, $70,000, between $50,000 and $70,000 to any cost that needed to be approached with, uh, it has to do with children, sports, a police or fire for the city. So in, in, in lieu of not having to pay a franchise fee, I was willing to contribute to the city as, I don't know if it's called charitable or it's just called, it's a, uh, as the city attorney just mentioned.
So this, and this $80,000, because I, I, I recall you telling me this. And this $80,000, I'm not exactly sure, city attorney, on what, what you're going to call it, the social, uh, uh, benefit?
Community benefit.
Community benefit fund. This would be a contractual obligation, right? This isn't something that you can change your mind about. So the $80,000 is hard money that you had agreed in the contract that you were going to provide.
Yes, I put that on the, on the, some of my, uh, notes on it and also provide still, I have to, have to provide the city towing for free for the police department that I've been.
So I wouldn't, I wouldn't want anyone here to think that, 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 that the vendor, ju-, even, even though the law changed, he's not required to do that, he offered this. This wasn't extracted from him.
Right.
He offered it.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, Vice Mayor.
Yeah, a, and thank you. And, um, boy, that was a lot. Um, and I would certainly hope that we're not violating, uh, the spirit of the law when we take contractual contributions.
Ask them.
So, uh, I leave that to the attorney and the city manager because that's not, uh, my area of expertise. I just know though that the law changed and the way that the law is, um, it, it dramatically changed the contract that we had and hence the cleanest way to move forward is to go out to bid, period. Said, just go out to bid, let's just redo it all because it ain't the same no more. Let's stay out of the way of any, uh, threat of violating any law. So, um, the next thing that I would like to speak to is, is just, you know, I, I hear a lot and, uh, listen, I, I really trust our police department and I really trust the fact that they say that this is a very important element for them. And I'm unfortunately in a situation where I have to support or I have to be concerned about the balance of the need between the residents and the police department. I'm certain that this company gives the police department 100% golden glove treatment. But when it comes to the residents or the people that are being impacted, it's a little bit different. Because what happens at a, a police activity or a scene or something that requires this service for the police, it's nice and easy. Everything is smooth. They know who's going to do whatever. But when, when, when everybody goes and the blue lights go away and somebody has to go and retrieve their vehicle, it's a whole different story. It's a second element of this type of arrangement. Me, I'm a focused on customer service kind of person. So I think that it should be, uh, very important to also be in consideration of the resident or the, call it the customer that, that had their car towed and has to now pick it up. And so I believe that the intention of the law, uh, actually focused on that. They didn't want a company to have a monopoly within a local municipality in order to be able to, so that a, a resident or a customer could not, um, execute on a complaint or execute on a need. So, uh, because it was a monopoly. But now, me personally, um, the way I see it is competition helps make that customer service component a little bit better. Because if somebody, if we continue to receive certain behavior patterns, we can say, hey, uh, either you correct it or we, we're going to have to go to somebody else. I mean, so we're, we're actually putting a little bit more back to the customer, back to our residents and the ability for them to be able to say, uh, something about what experience they had. Now, I'm not here to speak to the, to the police department on how they use the pool and that's not my intention at all, you know? I just think however though, having a pool of vendors to perform the service uh, provides us with the ability to provide a better customer service experience well beyond after the police activity takes place. So, um, for me, I, I am going to support that we move forward with, um, uh, putting this, uh, out to bid. And I, I do also encourage that we consider a pool of vendors, uh, in accordance with some of the other, uh, things that we talked about during the amendment discussion. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, just if I can to clarify for the record, in the context of the statutory amendment which occurred this past year, uh, the city commission in response thereto did adopt an ordinance. The reference to the record is referenced as section 72.09 of the code. And essentially it represents what the statute allows for, which is in fact the following. The administrative charge shall be equal to 25% of the maximum towing rate and the towing rate is that which is established by the county. So the city's in compliance with both state law and with the county's requirements and your own laws. But the franchise fee has been limited and, and the city in response to the statutory mandate passed this ordinance. It was vendor neutral. It applied to everybody. And that was an issue that the Vice Mayor raised during the conversation of going out to bid for the process, as I recall.
All right.
Thank you.
Let me just say on this item before we vote, I am in favor of one vendor, not a pool. I agree with the police department that we need one vendor. And so I, I just want to get my comment on the record. All right, we're now on the, um, item as amended. Uh, City Clerk, call and roll.
Commissioner Castillo?
No.
Vice Mayor Good?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Commissioner Cyclo?
Yes.
Mayor Ordus?
No.
Motion passes.
All right, let's go on to Vice Mayor, item C.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is motion to approve request to advertise solicitations, CPS, PW dash 21 dash 05 disaster warehouse building modifications.
Uh, no, you're on, uh, we're on item D. No, item C, I'm sorry.
C, Mayor.
C. You just said, okay. Is there, uh, is there a motion?
What, I'm sorry, Mayor, I, I'm not hearing very well.
All right, let's do it, let's do it again. Okay, Vice Mayor, please read item C, 22C.
Motion to approve request to advertise solicitations, CPS, PW dash 21 dash 05 disaster warehouse building modifications.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Cyclo. Vice Mayor?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I, um, would like, um, to put some perspective on this project here. So we are, we are going out, uh, to bid to do modifications to a warehouse building and we're going to repurpose that building. It's important to recognize that the size of that building is about 290 square feet. So let me tell you what 290 square feet is. Let me give you a reference. See the middle chairs here? Right here? All the chairs in the middle? That's about 290 square feet. That's how big a building that we're talking about. 290 square feet. This building is projected to cost $200,000. Wait, it's not going to be a, we're not building a building. We're going to renovate an existing building of that size, 300 square feet. So let's take it $200,000, 290 square feet. That's $690 a square foot. The average cost for commercial building, building a commercial building is about $236, $237,000 a square foot. So let me scale this up and just put a little bit more comparison here. If you're using a standard three-bedroom, four-bedroom house with this 690 square foot cost.
Vice Mayor, can I interrupt you?
Sure.
City Manager wanted to get in.
Sure, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I think there's.
Mike?
Sorry. I think there's a misunderstanding as to the square footage of the building.
Could we please call up the item, uh, or call the backup, please? I'm, I'm disadvantaged with my computer here.
Okay.
Mr. Buckman, you want to answer that question?
I, I don't have a question. I, I really don't have a question about.
This is a warehouse building that's, uh.
That's the right figure.
Thousands of square feet. So if there's a typo on the, the, uh, square footage on it, then.
Keep going down. This is, this is about where. You probably need to go to scope. And if that's the case, then that's the case. You might need to go more to top.
Steve, you have the square footage of the building?
I do not have it.
It's, it's, it's in the bid. Can you go back to?
Excuse me?
Do you have a map? Is there a, is there a, there should be a dot.
Right here, stop.
Stop, go ahead.
Stop. Well, right here, at least, here, one of the times it references.
Oh, air-conditioned area.
And you'll still find.
Mr. Buckman, could you hit the mic?
Yeah, that's a very small office area. The balance of the warehouse is, uh.
That, that talks about the condition, the air-conditioned area of the building, which is the office for the, um.
Find the rest of it.
For the, uh.
Is this across from Studio 18?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, okay. I'm, it was a very rough guess, but I'm going to say the building's 5,000 square feet, but yeah.
Mayor, if I could, uh.
Not a very good.
Mayor, if we were to, um, pull up quick BCPA and just do a Google stretch, I know Mr. Stam is very versed in measuring, uh.
It's in the bid.
Square footage.
I know, it needs to be corrected if there's an error in the bid, but it's certainly a building that's, uh, thousands of square feet.
But that just talked about the air-conditioned space, which is the.
Okay, we need to know the total.
Yes, sir, I, I agree. We need to know the total square footage.
And we should know what it is because it's, uh, the mirror to the building of public services.
So you stop right here. Building, no.
Stop right here. Oh, this is the Polk?
It says, if you stop right here, it says, storage and warehouse bulky active storage 182, storage and warehouse bulky active storage 108. Add that up, that's 290. I don't, I don't know where, where this would say it's more than 290. I haven't, I didn't find it in there.
This is the Polk building, right?
No, sir, this is the disaster warehouse that we were going to convert to be a garage for transportation to work on the buses.
Oh, okay. Split system.
So what is it?
We need to, we need to get the square footage, but it's actually, this is to go out for bid. So the accurate square footage needs to be in that proposal.
This is, this is a report on the air conditioning system for the built, for, for the space. This is not a, a report on the, on the actual building itself. And I believe in the, in the backup, there should be a floor plan of the building that, that shows the, uh, the, the total square footage of the building.
Keep going. Keep going.
Uh, I think you went too far.
Is that it?
Yeah.
What's the address?
It shows right here on the, on the map, if you take a look. It's a pretty small building.
I have it up. What's the address?
It's right here.
It's right on the scope, it's on the machine. Okay, so how big is that, uh, Mr. Buckland?
I'm trying to find it, I can't see... One-oh-one, Point Tiana Drive?
One-zero-zero-one, Point Tiana Drive, Pembroke Pines, Florida.
So, there it is, Mr. Buckland.
Drive.
I'm sorry, it's sideways, I can't read that.
Uh, can you turn it?
Keep going down, there's, there's, see if there's a schematic.
Obviously, something's wrong. Keep going, uh, city clerk. What's that right there? Kind of measurement of the building? Oh, okay, keep going.
There's no listing in, uh, under that name, under that address. Yeah, that, unfortunately, that's one big property, so it's not gonna show the, the square footage of each individual building. What's the address?
So, you can take a look, you can see, you can fit only about six cars in there.
Mayor, point of order?
So, you take a look at it.
Mayor, point of order?
Go ahead, Commissioner Castillo.
Uh, through the mayor to the city manager, can we defer this until the next meeting?
Absolutely, absolutely.
All right, maybe you can come back with, uh, with an update on this, and, uh, we can move on.
No objection. Okay, let's go to Commissioner Schwartz, item F, please, on item twenty-two.
Um, it's twenty-two F. If I can have the city attorney or, or city clerk read that, 'cause I don't have the book.
I'll be happy to read it.
Design services for the Polk Building renovation.
That's what it says, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Commissioner, go ahead.
I just needed to get a second.
Second.
Hey, Commissioner Schw, uh, Seifel, go ahead.
Okay, so, I'm really happy that we're not gonna do anything unless we get the grant, so it's costing us nothing unless we get the grant, right?
Correct.
However, we need to make sure that since this is gonna be used as, um, as a backup to the emergency building that we have here, that is cat-five rated. So, I had inquired this week about the current shell structure, if we know if the current shell structure is gonna even be close to, um, meeting cat-five. We're gonna need to have a certain roof structure, tie-ins, steel beams. I don't know what the column pores currently are now, um, so, Mr. Buckland, what, what do you think this is gonna wind up being? Because if we need to knock it down, then that's pretty simple, we can calculate that cost. If it needs to be retrofitted, then certainly we can go through that process as well. What do you think?
Well, part of the construction, um, would be to replace all of the windows and doors with all cat-five impact windows, rated doors. The roof has already been replaced with a cat-five rated roof. As far as the walls go, I would have to get an engineer's report to go for that.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Buckland. The, the roof surface is cat-five?
Yes, sir, it's one-hundred-and-eighty mile an hour wind rating.
What about, what about the structural integrity of the tie-in? Is it, do you know if it's, if it's, uh, if it's a concrete steel tie-in?
It's, uh, T-beams.
Okay.
Tied in with the concrete structural walls.
Okay, so there's a good chance that it's gonna... Have you done any preliminary, uh, discussions with the, uh, with our, um, building officials to see if, if it would meet cat-five?
No, I have not.
Okay, that, that's my only hang-up, and again, it's not costing us anything to go out, right, um, to do this, but, um, certainly I would wanna make sure it's cat-five. The other thing, too, I know, uh, Director, uh, Mike Lockett, uh, he and I had conversations years ago about, um, if we're going to make an auxiliary backup building, we should probably have it, uh, not three miles away from the one that we currently have. I guess we can determine, uh, through Mr. Kefert, what technology is important, if we flip the switch in Colorado, wherever that might be, for us to be backup online, but the whole point of redundancy is so that we're not impacting the same exact area, especially within three miles, as a crow flies, to go through this process. So, um, I'm super excited about this opportunity and this placement. If you recall, Commission, we had deferred this a couple of years ago off of the, uh, water utility bill, and it was gonna be quite expensive. So, now we're at the point of grant money. I like that, even better. So, I just wanna make sure we get it right, because once this is built, it's gonna be a fifty-year building, or, or better. So, I just wanna make sure that whatever we go forward with, it's, you know, i, we're ready to go from day one if, if we get that room.
On item F, any other further discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I do.
Got Vice Mayor?
So, can we call the, uh, call the item, um, backup up, please? And, and go...
City clerk?
And go to the scope. All right, go back up to the purpose, I'm sorry, just go up one. Right here?
There it is.
And then go down to the project summary for a moment. That's probably where it could be then. All right, so, so we're renovating a twenty-five thousand square foot building, and in here, it speaks to, uh, the reason why we're, we're doing that building is to support the utility billing, GIS, and that was about it. Is there other things that this thing is going to be designed for, and can somebody point to i, in the documentation here?
City manager?
What other things would be done? What's it being done for, other than utility billing and for...
All right, let's find out.
GIS?
City manager or Mr. Buckland, go ahead?
Uh, Steve can define it, or Mr. Gies.
Well, what the, the building is being designed for is to, to move our utility customer service over to that. Uh, we also moved in the, the GIS department over there, which is rapidly expanding for the city, um, and then it was the emergency backup E O C, and it, it's a, a place for the people that run the E O C to go to in case something were to happen to Civic Center. So, if something were to happen to Civic Center, and we had a major catastrophe over here, they will be able to, to assemble at that location and still op, run the operations for the city. We're also planning on taking all the SCADA that's for our water, u, water plant, our wastewater plant, our lift stations, and our generators, to have a central hub location that they can all be monitored from there, and we can make live action, uh, um, calls from, at that point.
What other things is the building being used for, then?
Nothing. Currently, now, nothing.
Shell, it's a shell.
It's a shell, it's been gutted. Uh, we actually, we're, we're using it to, to store some of the police department's, uh, license plate readers.
And how many, how many, how many people, then, are we talking about between utility billing and the GIS?
Well, utility billing, customer service, right now, I believe, has about, uh, twenty-five people in there right now. Um, the GIS, I would have to defer to Matt Caffert on, on how far that will go, um, and then we're also, uh, part of that will be the utility, uh, the personnel that run the utility for the s, for the SCADA, um, and I would have to defer to Mr. Thompson, looks like he has departed, uh, on that.
So, I'm, 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 I'm having a bit of a struggle, 'cause this is twenty-five thousand square feet, so unfortunately, I have to put it into a framework. It's a, a twenty-five thousand square foot building would sit squarely on one half of a football field.
Yeah, it's big.
Yeah, and for twenty-five plus, I don't know, call twenty-five more people, fifty people, that's a pretty big building for fifty people. Um, and so I'm, I'm, I'm having a hard time understanding that, um, relationship between the number of people, the size of the building. I understand the thing about the E O C, I, listen, if, if, if we have, we're cat-five here, we have a, a, a storm that blows this place down, I don't have any faith in the other place being there either. Now, having it as an F O C, as a field operations center, I could see a little bit more understanding to that, because that's where you run your operations out of, not necessarily your entire emergency operations center, but, um...
And, and I agree, the chances of, of the Civic Center being blown down are kinda hard, but th, there is the possibility, and we just wanna be able to have a backup area for that.
But we're talking about three million dollars of money that could otherwise go towards other projects that are necessary for the city as well, too. So, I mean, and that's what I'm thinking about, that's one of my charges, right? So, um, the other thing is, is that, you know, we, we're estimating two-hundred-and-forty thousand dollars for this project, for professional services, um, three million dollar estimated construction cost. Um, I'm not comfortable even with the estimate on professional services, 'cause that's only eight percent, and so I fear that we move forward, it's gonna be more than two-hundred-and-forty thousand dollars when the bids come back, 'cause the average is around fifteen percent of construction cost for professional consulting services.
I, I, I gave that estimate based off of a, uh, what the state requires for, for, uh, uh, the information that I've been got, that I have been given, that the state requires for professional services, that they pay no more than eight percent, and I felt like that after we went out with, for the C C and A requirements, we negotiate with the architects, that we could probably get someone to do it for that amount.
Okay, I'm not... And, and, and good, and if you win on that point, great. Um, I've not had that experience ever.
Right.
Um, and so, the potential is, is that, yeah, we get grant money, but then, you know, how much of our own money do we have to put in this? And then, of course, Commissioner Schwartz, you spoke about this being grant, this money is not grant money, this is, this is money that's being spent upfront by us, and I don't know, do we get re, cost recovery for those professional services?
We, we would not proceed unless we knew we had the approval of the grant, and yeah, sometimes, uh, you do have to front money, but it's with the condition that you've received the grant, and you meet all the criteria as specified in what the project will be.
And again, this was, you know, we were just wanted to, 'cause the C C and A process is such a, a lengthy process, we just wanted to go ahead and get a head start on this. If we end up not getting the grant, uh, we weren't, we weren't going to do anything other than select a vendor, we weren't gonna ask them to do any work until that we know that we have the grant in place.
Okay, and, and if this is done by grant, trust me, I'm like, okay, hands down, listen, that's a, that's a free opportunity, I agree, but I also can tell you how many times, uh, grant monies are provided, and projects, uh, exceed what the grant dollars are, that are available, and if you take one dollar, and it costs you a hundred dollars, if you take one dollar grant money, and it actually costs you a hundred dollars, you gotta spend ninety-nine dollars in order to get that one dollar of free money, which sometimes, not cost-effective.
Well, we would never recommend to the commission if that was the case.
But, I'm usually, I'm, I'm sorry that I have to demonstrate it in that way, but that's, uh, you know, listen, a half a million dollars versus a half a million dollars is, is sometimes a little bit more money than what we can expect, but somehow, sometimes we get ourselves boxed in, and I'm just kinda speaking to this point of getting boxed in...
All right.
You know, I'm making a commitment, so...
We'll make sure that doesn't happen.
And, and so, the only other thing is, is that, all right, I'll, I'll leave it alone, uh, you know, you, you all, the only other question I have is if you're going out for C C and A, is this a, is this a full, uh, open, is this an open C, C and A process, or is this a closed C C and A process?
I'm sorry, I'm, I, I, that would be a question for Mr. Gomes.
Mr. Gomes, open or closed?
Mark Gomes, procurement director, this would be a fully open, uh, procurement process, anyone can bid on it.
Thank you. All right, so I'll wait then, and, uh, until this guy, I guess this is gonna come back, or, or not?
Yes, it will definitely come back once we go out for the proposals, but we will not award anything until such time we know the status of the grant.
All right, no further discussion, city clerk, call the roll on item F, please. City clerk?
Yeah.
Need your mic, yeah. Go ahead.
The, the issue is now, there we go.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, call the...
City clerk?
Okay, there we go, it's working now.
All right.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yeah.
Commissioner Seifel?
Yes.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Good?
Yes.
Mayor Orde?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. All right, we're on item twenty-four, Commissioner Seifel.
Thank you, Mayor. Motion to approve the second amendment to the contractual services agreement between the City of Pembroke Pines and Gomez and Son Fence Corporation for an annual amount not to exceed five-hundred thousand dollars for the term of the agreement.
Second?
And, Mayor, the reason I brought...
Please, the second?
I'm sorry.
Please, the second?
I did.
Commissioner Castillo?
Commissioner Castillo, second.
Mayor, the reason that I brought this up is I'd like to ask city manager, I had discussion with him about this, and I would like for him to explain, um, what he explained to me is that, um, we're not really looking to increase the dollar amount, we're staying what was budgeted, but perhaps we may end up with less fencing, um, than, than what we had projected. Is that correct, city manager?
Yes, that is correct. We've been advised by the vendor that their, their cost has been passed along through the manufacturers of materials that they acquire, and they are asking for this increase. However, it will not increase the amount that we allotted in the budget, we just will not be able to do as many, uh, projects during the fiscal year as that we had anticipated.
And, and, thank you, city manager, for that, um, for that, but going forward, as always, um, if there is a, uh, an absolute need for, for fencing, w, we do have funds available that would be outside of this, that we could, uh, we could do if it was a necessity, and we were, we were there, it was a health and safety type issue, something like that, where we would be able to take care of that issue, correct?
We would have to bring that item back before the commission, and try to locate those funds within the current budget.
But that is a process that we have done before, and could be done.
That would be the process, we cannot exceed that five-hundred thousand without approval by the commission, amendment to the contract to exceed it, and also designate where those funds would be coming from.
Okay, in other words, just follow the process if we need to, correct?
Yes.
Thank you so much.
All right, further discussion, item twenty-four.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
So, I, uh, would like to ask the city attorney if he could identify the language in, in the agreement that allows for this company to ask for an increase.
City attorney?
I don't have the contract in front of me, but if the clerk can bring it up, and/or Mr. Gomes, Gomes and I can take a look together, on the record, that would be a good place to start. It's not in the backup, it's actually online. We have that? We have it? The contract itself, the commissioner and vice mayor has asked about language in, in the agreement itself, which provides for an increase...
That allows the contractor to ask for the increase in the first place.
It would have to be. As amended.
Amendments?
Yes, ma'am. The First Amendment was adopted in September of twenty-twenty, and provided for additional three-year period, and it was, as I recall, there was no specific increase provided for in the First Amendment, it was simply a time extension, correct?
Mr. Attorney, I don't, I don't mean to put you on the spot or anything, but I, I do want to disclose to my colleagues that we did have this conversation.
We did, we did. I was unable to access all the documents today, but my recollection was seeing what I was able to see, Mr. Vice Mayor, was there was no specific provision for increase.
We have it on the record.
It's a request being made by the contractor now while the contract is in play.
Okay, we have it on the record. All right, then, uh...
Okay, so let me, let me finish this up then. So, all right, so we don't have language that allows for the increase, but yet the contractor, uh, provides us with, uh, a request. So can we go to the contractor's request, please, for a moment?
Would, would I be able to just provide a little clarification?
Sure, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Sorry about that. I'm Mark Gomes, procurement director. Uh, in Article Five of the original agreement, there is language that talks about changes in scope of work. It also says, uh, in section five point one, city or contractor may request changes that would increase, decrease, or otherwise modify the scope of services as described here to be provided under this agreement. These changes will affect the monthly compensation accordingly. Such, uh, changes or additional services, uh, must be in accordance with the provisions of the code of ordinance. So that's, uh, one section of the contract that addresses changes i- in general.
Thank you. And we did not change the scope, as I heard. So that, what you just read does not apply.
Mr. Vice Mayor, that's, I mentioned that for the mayor, that was scope related, correct?
That is correct. So there was no, uh, extenuating circumstances that occurred that allows you to come and ask for price increase. So, so, uh, can we, can we go to, uh, yeah, so here, what we have is, uh, the contractor sending us something saying that, uh, they have no other choice but to request a seventeen percent increase across the board for, um, you know, material costs going up. So I'm, I'm not going to dispute whether that's occurring or not. Um, however, this is the only thing that has been provided to the city is that this vendor says, I have a seventeen percent price increase. There is no other information in the backup that would otherwise prove that to be true.
With that letter were several different, uh, uh, items that came from the manufacturers, uh, like, right there, the different increases they've had, uh, monthly for the past year. Um, I called Master Halco. I spoke with one of their representatives. Um, I did verify in fact that they have had all these price increases for the past year, which he stated since October of twenty-twenty has totaled to about a hundred percent increase that, to the fencing materials.
So if, can we also then go to the, um... There, there's a, a list of their price changes. Is that going to be in the amendment? That shows all their groups, one through eleven?
It'd be, so that would be one...
That should be at the end of that. The shows where we, I created a spreadsheet showing the, the increases in prices. The yellow shows the current pricing that is in place now. The orange, uh, shows a seventeen percent increase for each one of those line items. I did this in Excel. I use formulas to, uh, create those increases and, and what the effect would be.
And, and you did fine. Um, go down to group eleven. So in group eleven, they asked for a seventeen percent increase across the board for these items here, uh, that don't look like, maybe they're related to any of the cost increase that they were asking for. They just said across the board, and I'm assuming that that's what they asked for is across one through eleven.
They, they did ask for across the board excluding the very last item, eleven M, which is the, uh, cost plus for, for products that weren't specified in the bid.
I mean, you got labor, I don't know, that wasn't a material cost. And you got rental of fencing, that's not a material cost. Um, so, you know, group eleven, I'm a little just outright like, no, I don't agree to that either because I don't think it's relevant, uh, to what, uh, what they're, what they're claiming is a material cost increase. But, but let me, let me explain why I'm going through all this here. Um, you know, when, when somebody's asking for, uh, an increase, you know, and this is a half a million dollars, it's aiming like, uh, just a couple bucks. This is like really, you know, a lot of money. This is precedent setting. This is contract number one of the many contracts that possibly is going to follow this. Like the next item, and the items that are coming, going to come beyond that. Now, I, I just, I just ask a, just a, just a common, common question that would, that comes to me is, yeah, material costs are going up right now because of, you know, scarcities and things like that, but eventually that stuff goes away and costs go down. So what happens to the contract now? We just wrote it into a contract for a period of time. So how do you, how do you extract ourselves out of that? We just now allow them to maintain a profit margin and then at some time in the future have even a greater profit margin. So do we reverse this and say, hey, can we modify the contract later to reduce the material costs and reduce the prices again? And if that's so, well, who's going to monitor that? Staff is not going to monitor that. They were, they, they were monitoring, they would have came before these people came and say, hey, we're going to wind up getting hit with a price increase. So I, I, I am against this, um, this, this, the, the way that the request is being made. It's not in the contract for extenuating circumstances or something like that, ex, you know, uh, for allowing them to do a price increase. And then when we do a price, so, so that in and of itself sets precedent to all the other contracts. And then the other thing is, is that this, this is probably a, a temporary thing, or maybe not. I don't know. But it, but it probably is, and it might go down, maybe not go down seventeen percent. It might go down to five, might go even lower, we don't know that. So, you know, how do we deal with this? And, and that if they are able to prove that there is a price increase, you know, yeah, I don't want to hold them, you know, feet to the fire to that either. I think they should be compensated accordingly if, if there is a national push on prices and things of that nature. I understand that. So I, I, I think maybe this is better managed on a job-by-job basis as opposed to just changing the contract and wait until the contract expires. And I think that, uh, you know, we should be setting a precedent for anything else, anybody else who comes and say, hey, I got a price increase and I'm going to, I'm going to need it. Maybe we give the, uh, city manager the authority to, you know, receive verifiable information that, you know, that allows the city manager then to make that determination on whether that particular job can be paid more than what the contract terms called for. But to just carte blanche, across the board, give somebody an increase, I can't support that.
Okay. You want to make an amendment?
Well, I, I personally think that, uh, that this item should be pulled and give the city manager an opportunity, because he's heard the, what conversation we just had and see if there's a way to address this without having to modify the contract and open up the doors for many more to come.
Make a motion.
So I make a motion to table this until the city manager has an opportunity to come back.
Second, second to the table by Commissioner Seifel. Question on the table.
Yes, I, um...
Commissioner Castillo?
What is the, uh, what's the term of this contract? When does it expire? You're, you're asking for an amendment in order to pay them an additional amount, but when does this contract expire?
I don't know, three-year period.
If memory serves me correct, this, this expires in twenty-twenty-three, and then it is available for renewal at that time.
Okay, so is it, is it the, the, the company's position that they can't serve? They, they, they have a, a contractual impossibility to serve us until we approve this amendment?
Well, I've had, I've had many, many discussions with different representatives from the company. And as a matter of fact, they have a representative here tonight that would like to speak, if you would like to hear from him.
Sure.
Um...
I would like to hear from him, but I want to complete my question. So, so it, it ends in three years. We always have a right to, to terminate, go back out to bid, which if there is been this great shift in the, um, in the industry in terms of costs, we might need to do that. My question is, uh, we have to have a fencing contract in place. Uh, cost is important, but that's a, that's a serious consideration for us. So I need to know whether or not we approve this and then go out to bid so that we have a contract in place because the vendor cannot perform under the existing contract? Or what it is that we need to do? Now, do I ask you that question or do I ask the company that question?
I think it's, it's, it's a two-part question, and I would like to maybe just offer some of the...
Okay.
Things that I took in when, when considering, um, recommending this increase. Um, like I said, they provide the documentation and I, which I verified that their material cost has increased by one hundred percent over the past year.
Okay.
They are only asking for a seventeen percent increase in their, in their contract price. Now, their letter, you know, it basically states those material costs. But, but they've also had labor costs that have increased over, over the past year as well, which we know that we see that happening to everyone. Um, so I took that, I weighed it in, okay? The seventeen percent increase, um, how it would affect, you know, they're, they're basically taking it across the board, trying to make it easy for, for everybody to say, okay, just across the board, it goes out, it covers the labor, it covers the material, maybe doesn't even cover all of it, according to what they told me, that it doesn't cover their, their total increase that they've had. But it gets to them to the point that they can, they want to keep the continuing relationship with the city. Um, so those are the factors that I took in. I also did contact a couple of other, uh, fencing companies and got some prices on, you know, hey, I want to do, you know, three hundred feet of eight-foot chain link fence. What would you charge me to do this? And those prices were higher than what their proposed increases would be.
Mm-hmm.
So these were the different steps that I took to, to justify me coming to you with this increase. Because like you, I don't want to, I don't want to, my, my duty is to the city, not to the contractor.
Okay. Can I hear from the contractor now? I appreciate that. I appreciate what you said.
Need your name and address, sir? No, you shut it off. You shut it off.
Thank you.
There you go.
My name is, uh, Luisi Torriera, uh, N R eight thirteen South West, uh, four six Core Miami. Uh, I represent the company, uh, one of the project managers for the company. And, um, it's what, um, Mr. Parker has said, in the past year, we have received increase after increase for pretty much every month, sometimes twice a month. Uh, steel price went up, uh, even, uh, P P C fencing has gone up. So, yeah, it's gone up over a hundred percent. The owner, um, after, you know, working with the City of Pembroke Pines and we have a good relationship, she said, okay, we can increase about seventeen percent to, to maintain, uh, our services to you guys. And because we have, like I said, we have a good relationship. So, and that will help us to, to absorb some of the costs, that cost that we have right now.
But if we denied your request, you wouldn't be able to perform under the contract?
If you deny the request?
Yes.
I mean, we'll still try to per, uh, perform as much as we can and perhaps, um, but that'll be our determination on mine.
See, I'm trying to be fair, I'm trying to be fair also, you know, within, within the context of the people that, uh, that we do business with. So it almost sounds like we should defer the item. And what we should do is we should do a, 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 a quick market review to see, and let it come back so that the commission can see what the cost comparison is. If in fact the deal that's being offered makes sense, we should enter into it. And if, and if, and if the cost comparison isn't there, maybe we should make a different determination. But, uh, it sounds to me like, um, like staff had, uh, done some of this, uh, research and, um, somehow didn't get into the backup. It helps when we as commissioners read this. You, you, it, it's difficult for staff. And I, and I, and I recall when I was a staff member, having commissioners say this to me, we don't walk in your shoes, we walk in ours. So we don't know what your reality is, and we, we go by what is in the backup. So if, and I suppose what, what, what we've gleaned over life's experience. So if, if you were to have laid out in the, in the agenda report, I'm just suggesting this, if you were to have laid out in the agenda report, you know what? The seventeen percent of this, we made several phone calls through purchasing, and we found out that it was actually this, that, and the other thing. And in fairness to this contractor, we, we, we're going to do it. We, we're recommending it because, uh, not only, not only is, uh, does it make dollars and cents, it, it makes common sense in terms of, in terms of good business practice. We might have looked at it a little bit differently. So I understand, I understand the vice mayor's point. And, uh, uh, you know, I'm going to, I'm going to support a deferral if that's the motion that's being made. But when it comes back, I'd like to see this comparison. So I want to be fair to the man. But we must have a fencing contract in place. So can you guys be, is it possible, Mr. Dodge, that your staff can get this done for the next, for the very next meeting?
Mr. Dodge?
So that we can see this cost comparison?
Uh, we will provide an update at the next meeting.
Okay.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
And so, and, and, and thank you, Commissioner Castillo, you're right. Uh, my, my, my intention was for fairness. My, my concern, though, is that the one-time fix is not probably the right thing to do. So my, 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 uh, my intentions were for the city manager to be able to write into the contract that if they are able to provide evidence of a increase that triggers a certain amount, then the city manager, by, job by job, can authorize maybe the increase that was pr- provided to the city. The comparison, the comparison will be every job, not just this one time because next week the prices may be down. So I, I just think that, uh, again, the contract, there's not language in there that speaks to this kind of stuff. They're asking for it. We, we want to keep them whole, we want to help them, fine, let's do that. But at the same time, we also need to make certain we don't open up Pandora's box to let everybody in here doing the same thing.
On a motion, city clerk, call a roll, please.
And can we have the motion, motion read back, please?
Motion to table.
Motion to table.
Thank you.
Next meeting.
And for the record, ma'am, the motion includes a tabling to do a time cert in the next meeting.
Correct.
August eighteenth, twenty-twenty-one. Vice Mayor Good?
Yes.
Commissioner Seifel?
Yes.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Mayor Ordis?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you.
All right, item twenty-five, Commissioner Schwartz.
Thank you, ma'am.
Quickly, if we could.
Uh, twenty-five is a motion to approve the Fourth Amendment to the contractual services agreement between City Pembroke Pines and the City Pembroke Pines and F P I Security Services, Inc. in an annual amount not to exceed nine-hundred-and-thirty-four thousand, eight-hundred-and-twenty-six dollars.
Second? Do we have a second, second by Commissioner Castillo? Go ahead, Commissioner Schwartz.
All right, um, colleagues, I'm sensitive to this item because it relates to security, so I don't want to get into all of that.
Relates to what?
Security.
Oh.
I don't want to get into too specifics. However, um, speaking with, um, administration, uh, I've been told that there is an increase in the number of personnel to match the number of jobs required to keep the city safe. So do we have, um, do we have F P I in the, in the house? Thank you. Uh, either one of you gentlemen, just want to come down, I have a very simple question. Uh, my question is, the increase for labor, I see the labor rate increase, are you guys taking any additional administration costs, administrative costs, from that? Or is it going directly to personnel?
Or is it going directly to personnel that you hire?
Can you put your mic on if you can identify both of you, please?
Good evening, Daniel Gonzalez, Vice President, F P I, fourteen ten Northwest, one fourteen Avenue, Pembroke Pines. So, we proposing a two dollars and fifty cents increase to our rate, to our hourly rate. And that is for the purpose of providing our officers a two dollar an hour increase rate. Our officers currently make ten dollars an hour and come September thirtieth, um, they will be making minimum wage. So, we would like to give them an increase of two dollars an hour, uh, to help recruit better personnel and retain personnel. And that was the purpose for the two dollars and fifty cents.
Okay. So, you were here in June?
For a, um, the city hall position?
Correct.
Yes.
Why didn't you ask for it then? Why didn't you ask for the staffing, the dollar increase then?
Well, it was a sep- it was a separate matter. We were asked to provide a special guard for city hall, a school guardian. Um, so we have, we have a price for that.
Yeah.
And.
During the, uh, budget process, the manager presents, uh, an annual budget they like to adopt. When did you start having the discussions about hourly wage increases with the city administration?
Alexander Perez, President of F P I Security Services.
Good to see you, sir.
Seventeen seventy-one North Flamingo Road, Pembroke Pines, Florida. Um, right about a, uh, right about a, a month, I think about a month and a half ago, if I'm not mistaken. Uh, what caught us by surprise was the actual, um, the vote of the raising of the minimum wage of every year. That's when we started going into, um, we asked for, um, that we're having difficulty with the personnel. And that's when we asked the city, listen, uh, we've never asked for a raise since the beginning. And that's when we brought it up.
Okay. Um, so to answer my question, you said it's going directly into the pocket of the employee. There's no additional add-on dollars to it. It's a, it's a
Correct.
Asking for a two dollar increase, they're getting the two dollars?
They're getting the, 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 the officer's getting directly into the increase. There's nothing towards the company. The, uh, fifty cents is going into taxes and, and
Sure, the gross, yeah, yeah.
And, and to the point that Commissioner Castillo was making to the, to the previous vendor, um, this is definitely not going to take us to where we want to be, but it'll take us to a place where we can feel comfortable continuing the contract with, with a level of service that we're comfortable.
One of, one of the things, one of the, I was hoping you were going to be here tonight because I just want to thank you and your organization. Um, your work is not easy, especially with everything going on in the globe right now. Um, we have had, um, third-party vendors who have come to this commission in the past and have asked for increases and went straight to management. And, uh, and you've satisfied my, my hope that that wasn't going to be the case. I didn't think it was going to be because I, I know people in the, in the industry. I know what's happening, I know the difficulty of, um, the challenges that you're currently facing. I do want to thank you though for the software investments that you've made in order to keep your employees accountable to the contract and need of this community. Um, it has not gone unnoticed and I just want to thank you for everything that you do.
Thank you.
Happy to support the item.
All right.
Mayor?
Further discussion?
Yes, Mayor.
Commissioner Seifel?
Yes, I just have one quick question, Mayor. Um, this contract, um, that we are looking at, um, with the additional two-year term commencing June one, twenty twenty-one and expiring on May thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, is that correct? That will be, this contract that we're agreeing to tonight will end May thirtieth, twenty twenty-three?
Yes, that's correct.
That would be, that would be cor- correct. So, what we're agreeing to tonight carries through on, on all of that. Okay, thank you.
All right, further discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Vice Mayor? So, again, I asked the attorney, was there language in the agreement that allows for, um, the ask?
Mayor's promise, city attorney?
Similar to the previous item, the answer is no.
Okay, so, I just, just technically speaking, I just have issues with that. Um, the other, the other element I have with this is that, um, you know, this is, uh, this is almost a million dollars for service. And, um, and you're doing security at a number of facilities. So, the city manager was kind enough to provide me with a list of the facilities that you're doing, uh, the security at as well as what the shifts are and the hours and everything of that nature. And just looking at, at this list here, um, myself personally, I'm, I'm just not comfortable with, with, with the, uh, with the number of locations and the number of security and the hours and things like that. I think some of these locations here, actually, I think you can probably get to a, a better place of getting what you want and at the same time helping the city reduce its cost. You know, for, um, you know, considering things like maybe doing a rover between locations as opposed to having a person dedicated to a single location. And then the other thing is I still, I can't, I, I, and I, and I had issues with this. Every time it comes up, I have an issue. And that's the, uh, the wastewater plant. And it's, uh, it's twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. And I just can't understand why there's a need for a security guard at that wastewater plant when it's already manned twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week by another contractor. So, I don't, and, and that's not, y'all, y'all said, hey, city, and that's probably more towards the city manager in regards to, uh, you know, why are we providing security at a facility that is already manned twenty-four seven by another contractor? I just, I don't understand that.
If, if I may, Mayor, the, the personnel, for example, at a wastewater plant have functions to do. They're monitoring the facility and they're not out on the grounds and can they be on the grounds at all time? It's a pretty large facility, the same way as the water plant. So, for safety purposes, at those two locations, uh, especially at the wastewater plant in its location, we believe the twenty-four hours is appropriate. Uh, some of the other sites aren't twenty-four hours, they're, uh, a twelve-hour day for just the evenings. And some of these, uh, locations are pretty far apart. So, to share, uh, a security person going from one to another doesn't really give you those, uh, protections. But we certainly can go back and look at it and it's up to us. If we decide that we do not need someone there as long as we do, we just notify F P I and they remove that person or change the hours. And there have been times when we've had to increase, uh, personnel at locations and, you know, we have done so. So, the contract, uh, basically is determined by us, not by them. We, we dictate how many people we want and the hours we want and the days.
All right, and further discussion?
I, I, yes, and I just want to ask a few more thi- or just comment on a few more things. So, so we have, um, other, other locations like, uh, the, uh, the, uh, Old City Hall is one location that gets a twelve-hour shift.
Well, that was a new, uh, assignment and, uh, that can change at any time. The problem with the Old City Hall is we had an awful lot of vandalism there. We're concerned with safety in the building and everything going on. So, we recently, based upon a report from the police department and the types of vandalism going on there, that we needed to recently put it on. Once we, once we remove that person, hopefully, once that building comes down sooner than later, there would be no need for that person. So, that would be a saving. So, even though the contract says X, it goes up to that, but it would be less after that.
And, and then I make the same reference with the Human Services Park. I mean, these are, and, and, and I just share with you this as I think. I mean, th- these are like two locations that I see that could just split a rover. I mean, you don't need somebody sitting there all night long, watching that building, need somebody there
Well.
periodically, I mean, obviously, but, I mean, I just, so, I, I'll stop there.
Okay.
I'll, I'll stop there. I, what I'd like to see in this contract, if we are giving the price increase, you know, to what they asked for, then I also like to see that we have an overall cost reduction by maybe changing up a little bit on, or, or lightening up a little bit on the security services at some of these facilities.
We certainly will do a report and we'll provide it to you. But we're, we're concerned, if you look at the Howard Foreman Park, that's a pretty large facility. It's a hundred and some acres. So, we are patrolling and, uh, we also have someone at the housing, uh, for the affordable housing. We have a guard there, uh, to make sure people do not get into the facilities that should not be. But we'll revisit that and we can give you a report.
All right, and, uh, I, I, I think in today's environment, we need as much security as we can. Some crazies out there. All right, item twenty-five, further discussion. Hearing on call a roll, please, city clerk.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Good?
Yes.
Commissioner Seifel?
Yes.
Mayor Ordus?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. We're now on item twenty-eight, first reading ordinance, city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner, if you will. Item number twenty, it is in fact a motion to pass ordinance number twenty twenty-one thirteen, our first reading. It is proposed ordinance number twenty twenty-one thirteen, which is an ordinance of the City of Pembroke Pines, Florida, adopting the proposed small-scale land use plan amendment, amending the city's land use on an approximately seven-point-six acre property generally located north of Pembroke Road and west of Southwest one forty-fifth Avenue, as more particularly described in Exhibit A, amending the city's local land use plan map from office park to irregular residential at forty-six-point-one dwelling units per acre for the purpose of developing three hundred and fifty multifamily units, providing for transmittal of certified copies of the ordinance and transmission of the updated land use plan map to the Broward County Planning Council and Broward County Commission. Requesting Broward County to amend its future land use map and to recertify the city's land use map and authorizing the direction of the city manager and all appropriate members of the city administration to take all action necessary to effectuate the intent of the ordinance. Providing for conflicts, availability, finding, providing for, uh, effective date. Item number twenty-eight, twenty twenty-one thirteen on the floor, thank you.
Hi, we have a motion by Commissioner Castillo, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Seifel, discussion? Hearing, non-city clerk, call a roll.
No, no, I, I actually have questions on this one here.
Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
So, I, um, I guess I would need to have somebody, um, answer, you know, a little bit about, I understand the project, I'm not, um, I'm not adverse to it. I, I think it actually is a good location. I, I think, uh, you know, bringing additional housing, uh, you know, multifamily housing like this to that corridor is, is probably the most right thing. But I do, I do want to speak a little bit, uh, about the affordable housing component. We did talk about that earlier. Uh, I didn't speak to that item because I wanted to speak on this item here. And, um, I, I do want to say that I do appreciate what, uh, Commissioner Castillo, uh, introduced in terms of, you know, making housing available for, you know, uh, those workforce in particular. And, you know, he is, uh, very well-versed in this as he is, uh, you know, the secretary, I believe, for the planning council, is that correct, Commissioner Castillo?
Yes, sir.
Yes, and so he's spent a lot of years there and I'm, and he's, uh, he certainly has been serving well and he's served the city well. I'm certain he's going to see this item again too, at some point in time. But also, I, I gotta say, Commissioner Schwartz also brought up some other, you know, concerns about, you know, the type of affordable housing that's available in the city. And, and a lot of the workforce housing, or less than workforce housing, is, is, is concentrated on the east of the city. And so, you know, how do you, you know, get some of this distribution? And so, for me, when I look at this, you know, I, I, I see there's going to be, uh, hopefully, an affordable housing component to it. But I also like to talk a little bit about what is that affordable housing component look like? And so, if the representative of the applicant can speak to that, that would be helpful.
Can I, can I remove this while I'm talking?
Sure.
Thank you. Uh, Dennis Mealy, two hundred East Broward Boulevard, on behalf of the applicant. And instead of saying I've been sworn in, I will tell you I've been vaccinated.
Damn.
Thank you. Um, although I've learned recently that that doesn't mean I can't give it to somebody else, so I'm still wearing the mask. Um, when you look at the affordable housing study that was under number twenty, under number five earlier this evening, the first thing I want to point out is the county recently changed the methodology by which these studies have to be done. Every study that was done in the past for the City of Pembroke Pines was found to be acceptable by the county, meaning that you were doing what you needed to do with affordable housing in the City of Pembroke Pines. With the new policy that the county has adopted, I don't think there's any city in the county that is going to meet all of these categories. I mean, I don't want to name any particular city, but you can think of the city in Broward County that you think might have the lowest incomes and you're still going to see a shortfall of affordable housing in that city. So, um, you actually are doing pretty well on the owner occupied, on the, uh, people that buy and own their own home. You're in really, you're in pretty good shape there. You have a small, uh, shortfall in low income, you have a surplus in a for- in moderate. Uh, and then we project forward five years into the future and you have even a less, uh, shortfall in the low income and the moderate income. You still have a surplus, but not as big as it was last year or two years ago. Where the problem comes is the same problem that every community in Broward County has. When you look at the rental category, no one has an adequate supply of extremely low income or very low income. And you don't either, you're, you have a shortfall there. But when you look at the numbers for extremely, the way this works is you look at the income level of the person and, and you say they're not supposed to spend more than thirty percent of their income on housing. The other seventy percent should be for other things. So, when you look at that income level and you say, what is thirty percent? Buy them. So, you would have to rent the apartment for the extremely low-income person for four hundred and twenty-one dollars a month. No builder can build a building that can rent apartments for four hundred and twenty-one dollars a month unless there's massive subsidies from government or from some other source. You talked earlier today about whether there would be government land and you, sometimes you see that. We see, for example, in Deerfield Beach and Pompano Beach where they have housing authorities, they will actually get land and then do contracts for someone to build housing on them. Um, so that's one way to do it. The other way to do it is what the county has now been doing, where they have a allocation every year uh, to do, uh, bond issues or lending for affordable housing developments. The state has been doing this for a while, as you know, but every year the legislature pulls all the money out of what they call the Sodowsky Fund and spends it on something else. So, the county has now started doing that. I recently had a project in Dania Beach where we were going for some of the state money and the city gave us a loan, uh, that obviously has to be paid back, but allowed us to put that money in as a matching, uh, with the state application we made. Uh, but still, you have to find property at a pretty low cost, even with those things, to be able to do it. Now, what we've been doing in Pembroke Pines for years, even with the studies that the county found acceptable, is we've been making contributions to your Affordable Housing Fund. Uh, and we've done this for several projects in the past and we would propose to do it again here. So, one caveat I will give you is when we get to the county, we may be required to do more than that. Uh, many of the amendments that are going to the planning council now, I know Commissioner Castillo has seen them, are doing fifteen percent affordable housing, which is one of the ways the county has determined you can satisfy the requirement. You know, you could pay money, you could, the city could have some program for some impact fee, although you really can't do that anymore now because the legislature changed the statute. Uh, or you can build fifteen percent as affordable housing. We may very well end up having to do that here. We won't know that until we get to the county. Um, but because this is a land use plan amendment, we're here now. We're going to go to the Broward County Planning Council, we're going to go to the county commission, and then we're going to come back. And so, we have several months between now and then to determine exactly what's going to happen. But I assure you that if the county requires nothing more, we will definitely pay into the Pembroke Pines Affordable Housing Fund as we always have. I think however, it's pretty likely that we're probably going to have to do fifteen percent affordable housing. Now, what does that mean? Uh, at the county level, if you do, uh, fifteen percent affordable housing, it means you must be in the very low, low or moderate category. They don't tell you which one you have to be in, but you've got to be in one or more of those. You also have to deed restrict the property for a period of thirty years. So, let's say we're building a hundred units, you say fifteen of the units are going to be affordable. I'm going to have a restrictive covenant in my property that runs for thirty years. It's said I will always have fifteen of my hundred to be affordable. It doesn't have to be the same fifteen apartments. You know, one year it might be unit one oh one and the next year it might be unit one oh three. The idea is you don't build a lower quality unit for the affordable unit than you build for the rest. Everything should be the same. But when someone shows up, uh, you ask them for their tax return for last year, you see how much money they make. If they make a low enough amount, then they qualify to move into that unit. But it might be one unit this year and a different unit next year. Uh, and then, um, as I mentioned, there's an income test. If they're going to live in those fifteen percent of the units, they can't make too much money. They have to make below that level. And if you saw there was a chart in the item number five, I think it was on pages seven and eight, and it shows you all the numbers, the income levels, the thirty percent, the rent amount. Um, so, I think it's fairly likely that we will end up with fifteen percent. But, uh, there's no way it's going to be extremely low or very low because But there's no way it's going to be extremely low or very low because, you know, we can't rent apartments for four-hundred-and-twenty-one dollars a month or seven-hundred-and-sixteen dollars a month, which would be the very low number. Also, keep in mind, what we're doing on this site is we're building parking garages to serve the residential, the office, and the hotel. And whenever you build structured parking, you've increased your costs significantly over just building a surface parking lot. So you have to charge enough rent to make up for your costs of building the buildings, building the parking garages, et cetera. That's why, you know, rents are higher in buildings, higher on a per-square-foot basis in buildings that have structured parking versus surface parking. But at any rate, we know that it's probably the most scrutinized item on any land, residential land use amendment of Broward County, is affordable housing. So when we come back to you for the second reading, I should be able to report exactly what we're doing. And of course, approving on our first reading doesn't bind you to do anything on second reading if you're not satisfied. But if you have any other questions, I'd be happy to answer.
And thank you, Mr. Mealy, that's very good. You speak very well, very educationally.
The later it gets, the worse I get.
I hear you.
So I do want to point out that, you know, you did make the reference about, you know, affordable housing in these different categories, but they don't tell you which one. And certainly, I'm starting to really pay attention to what those categories are because it is, you know, the moderate affordable housing, you know, is approximately, what, a hundred-and-twenty percent of the median income, which is equal to about seventy-eight-thousand dollars? That's what it applies to. And so if somebody's making seventy-eight thousand dollars, can make up to seventy-eight thousand dollars and still be, you know, considered in the affordable housing. And for me, what I'm concerned about is, well, that's good, but there are those lower incomes that are very, very critical to survival of the city, so you can build everything you want, but if you can't bring the support people to keep the city moving in some of these basic areas, as Commissioner Castillo, you know, referenced earlier about teachers and restaurant workers and, you know, some of these other younger folks that, you know, are starting out in their career, you know, they move because it's too expensive to live somewhere. And so we need to, you know, we want to maintain high values, yes, but we also need to make certain that we are providing opportunity for those other income-level folks that provide basic service to the city, necessary service to the city, and I think that we should be looking at, you know, the very low and the low in terms of making those, these places available to them. And so, you know, this is first reading and I'll probably have some more conversation. I do like your comment about maybe we need to have some sort of subsidy for that, is there going to be something ready, available between now and the second reading? Probably not. But we certainly need to start thinking that way. We need to really be encouraging throughout the city, you know, very low and low-income level opportunities to get into some of these new places that are being built.
So, you know, I do want to say, and then I'll stop. One of the things that's happened all along is that it's been recognized at the county that the City of Pembroke Pines has one of the strongest affordable housing programs of any city in Broward County. And that's very unusual for a western city. Most of the other cities that you see doing this well are, you know, on the ocean, well, not on the ocean, but, you know, on the east side of town. So you certainly could do better, I mean, everybody could do better, and you want to do better, but you're doing pretty well already. And I know, Commissioner, you see that when you see amendments coming out of the cities that have no affordable housing and say they don't want to have any, and that's not Pembroke Pines.
When you're done, I'll make a comment, I'll ask the mayor, give me a turn.
Thank you, Mayor.
He's done?
Yes, thank you.
Commissioner Castillo, quick comment.
Yes, very, very quickly. So, now, we always want to see the distribution of affordable housing sort of evenly spread out. That's not always possible because of financial considerations and also because of lifestyle considerations. So the very, very low-income, let's say fifty percent of median income or thirty percent of median income, by and large, with some exception, use mass transit. So they need to be in transit hubs, they need to be in transit corridors because otherwise transportation becomes an issue. So it's about, it's about locating the housing relative to not just where you want to put it, but also relative to the usability of that and the accessibility of that, of that particular location. In Pembroke Pines, we have such individuals, and they should feel welcomed here. We also have a great deal of workforce housing individuals, people who are somewhere between one-hundred and one-hundred-and-twenty percent of median income. And you can even stretch that to eighty and one-hundred-and-twenty percent of median income. And that is the sort of just starting-your-career sort of number. That's what we pay teachers. That's unfortunately what many first responders, and I'm saying this not in terms of uniform services, but in the broader category make, the Publix worker, the cook in your favorite restaurant, that kind of, that kind of individual work, worker. And that worker deserves decent and affordable housing as well. When your committee meets, I know that, I know that because the, I'm sort of familiar with its mission, it looks at those particular indicators to see where it is that the gaps are. But ultimately, where you locate affordable housing has practical considerations. One of them is the affordability. Because if the land use, if the land prices exceed your ability to pencil out a project, it's not affordable. And the second thing is the lifestyle aspect of it, of access to mass transit, access to other services that may be necessary. So that's sort of the consideration. This city had the great opportunity to become the master planner for the Howard Foreman Campus. And you'll recall, because you've lived here a long time, when we took that place over, when City Manager Dodge took that place over, it was pretty much a dump. It was in bad, bad shape. I don't know anyone who would go onto that campus now that wouldn't say that this is an impressive place to be, because of the way that it's been taken care of, because of the way that it has been developed, very, very carefully. And, and we hardly get a complaint from the community because even though it has a very diverse human services use, that particular location works, it works well, it's well secured, it has the security services at the, at the housing that we provide there. And so, you know, all of those are things that I know that you'll discuss at your committee, and I very much welcome the comments that you made.
Mr. Dodge, do we still require six percent of the builder for affordable housing? Are there other components that can go around?
I'll defer to Mike.
We haven't done six percent in a long time.
Mike can address that.
And while he's coming up, your comment about mass transit and people that need to live, well, we need to talk to the Broward County Transit Authority to cooperate with cities when they want to do that. Pembroke Pines, greatest city in the world, wanted to do that right here at city center. Mr. Dodge and I were going the whole gamut about getting a garage, P3 for transit to be used in the morning for them and evening for us for our facilities here, and it just blew it. So I'm not happy about that, and I'll tell you that. Go ahead, Mr. Sam.
Mike Sam, Director of Planning and Economic Development. Mayor, I think the six percent you're referring to is municipal dedication. Municipal dedication is for parks and other municipal uses, but that only occurs when the property needs to be platted. So when you get those municipal dedication agreements, it's when properties have not been platted yet. This particular property falls under a different agreement as it pertains to the municipal dedication.
Okay, thank you. All right, any further discussion on item twenty?
Just a minute, I just wanted to say.
You have more to say?
Yeah.
Vice Mayor?
No, I just wanted to respond back to Commissioner Castillo, because he brought up some very good points, and I just, I just wanted to highlight that, you know, when you read the application here, it almost fits everything that you spoke to because it's high-density.
Right.
It's on a great transportation corridor.
Good item.
This is exactly what you were speaking to, and I, and I just point that out so that we, before the second reading, we can have some more conversation.
Item twenty-eight, City Clerk, color roll.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Although it is a first reading, and would you just allow the public to intervene to speak in the event that they did, just in case there's any member of the public who came out to speak?
Public, anybody would like to speak on this item?
Cover the issue, thank you.
Hearing non, I'll close the public hearing. City Clerk?
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Seifel?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Good?
Yes.
Mayor Otis?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you, congratulations.
Mayor and Commissioner, the second and final reading will be at some future moment. We don't know the date and time, but it'll be sometime in the future in these chambers.
Thank you. City Attorney, we're on item twenty-nine.
Thank you, Mayor. Commission number twenty-nine is a motion of the past proposed ordinance number twenty-two-one-fourteen in our first reading. It is proposed ordinance number twenty-two-one-fourteen is an ordinance of the City of Pembroke Pines, Florida, to approve the franchise agreement with Waste Pro of Florida Incorporated, that's Waste Pro, for solid waste, residential recycling, and commercial waste collection and disposal services attached here to Exhibit A, authorizing the city manager of the City of Pembroke Pines to execute the agreement with Waste Pro, all consistent with the revisions of Section three-point-one-two of the Charter of the City of Pembroke Pines, Florida, providing for severability, providing for conflicts, and providing for effective date. Item number twenty-nine, twenty-one, twenty-two-one, twenty-two-one-fourteen on the floor. Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner.
Moved by Commissioner Seifel, is there a second?
Second.
Second by the Vice Mayor, discussion?
Yes.
Commissioner Castillo?
I know you gave a, a discussion, Charlie, before. Is this the long-term agreement or the short-term agreement?
Mr. Dodge? This is the long-term agreement.
Okay. So, City Manager and I had, had a conversation, I want to say this.
No.
No. City Manager and I had a conversation about this, and I, and I want to say it as briefly as I can. I had been, I've been predicting certain things just based on my experience for a while now, and Commissioner Good will remember a meeting, I think it was three years ago, he had only recently joined us, and Mayor Otis was there as well. And this was the, the, a meeting of, pardon me, Commissioner, whatever the name of the committee that is the Resource Recovery, what is that, the one you're on, what is that called?
Right now, it's called the Solid Waste.
Solid Waste.
For.
And I'm the alternate member. Okay. So at the time, at the time, I believe Commissioner Good was representing his employer, and the mayor was the, was the member. But I showed up because I have had this concern and I had a question to ask. And the question that I asked was, we will soon, because we cannot sell recycling to China anymore, if we don't develop a, another nation that we can sell it to and generate revenue that way, we will be swimming in our own garbage very, very quickly, particularly recycling was the concern, because at the time, we were under seventy-five percent reduction rule of not dumping recycling in municipal dumps. And at that time, no one was even thinking about incinerating recycling, though the incinerator plant was operating. Since then, millions of tons of recycling has been incinerated, including millions of tons, I would imagine, from this city that has been incinerated. The public doesn't, hasn't been told about this, but it's true. It's undeniably true that that has been going on. And they're entitled to know. And when they found out about it, they wanted us to do something. And it's this particular committee, together with the county, that wanted it done. And this is why, Commissioner, Vice Mayor Good, when you brought up the issues of independent versus dependent, in my mind, what's been, what's been going around is, who has the shoulders big enough to deal with this mountain of plastics and paper and glass and metals, the metals, at least, there's a market there for them? But who can get their arms around this? I think no one else, but the county can do that. The job of cities is to collect garbage, not to dispose of it. That's not our job. The job, that's a regional responsibility everywhere in the United States. It's a regional responsibility. And whoever has that regional authority has the need to do it. The residents of this city expect us, us, who's us? The elected group of people that they elect on election days and send to work. They expect us to figure this thing out. However, daunting however difficult it is, and this is a very, very difficult issue, they expect us not to surrender to the problem, but to solve it. And this committee has been meeting for quite some time, and I know that the issues have been difficult, and sometimes dealing, doing business with the county is no bargain either. However, we have to come up with a solution to this problem. I was originally persuaded by arguments that I've heard earlier today about RFPing and how when we decided to put this out, this particular item out to bid, suddenly we did an about-face. I asked questions as to why, I wasn't giving the answers, fine, whatever. But we're now back in this, in this place with Waste Pro. And we now have no choice, we now have to move forward with it because that's the decision the commission made. However, in this particular contract, there is a co-mingling of waste and recycling. And this is a growing trend now. And both the waste and the recycling is going to be sent to the incinerator. And people are not happy with that. They want us to come up with an answer to this. Now, before this, and this is, I've actually brought this up several times, before this, we were recycling and sending our waste to the transfer station. And there, the recycling went into one group and they did whatever they did in terms of sorting that out, and then they also sorted out the regular garbage at the location, which on occasion led me to ask Mr. Dodge, well, if they're sorting out the regular garbage, why are we recycling in the first place? Because they're doing it. Well, because it helps with the cost and helps with the logistics, and that was, in my opinion, a fair answer. At any rate, at that time, there was a market for this recycling, and so the sorting out of it was a dollars-and-cents proposition, and something that had to be done. But now, now we're not sending it off to dumps because we can't, we're sending it off to incinerators, and that's just not the answer. I can see, I can see over the short period of time, when we get to that contract, I intend to vote in favor of it, because we have to have a garbage collector, and this is the state of the reality of where we're at with the recycling. We're incinerating it, that's what's happening to it because there's no market for it. If there was a market for it, we wouldn't be doing that. At Willabato, they have the capacity to do recycling, but they're really not doing it. There are carters, including this one, I understand, that have a facility for recycling, I think at Miami-Dade, but then there's, there are other carters, there's another facility in Pompano. I asked, I asked the city manager, rather than get our residents out of the habit, which is hard to find, which is hard to form, I should say, of recycling, why don't we find an alternative for this? And I spoke to my good friend, our good friend, Commissioner Bean Fer, who of course is associated with, very, very closely with the, with the Solid Waste Board, and I asked him, what are we doing with, you know, in terms of, in terms of moving this thing forward? And he says, we expect to have answers. And this board is adamant about doing it. And very recently, he told me, and I'll hear, we'll hear more from the Vice Mayor on it, that they're close to defining an ILA and getting this thing going, and they want to get together and they want to create facilities where this recycling can go, be cleansed, be cut up, reused, and repurposed into products that we can use. That, to me, makes common sense. The residents in the city want to see that happen. It's not ready yet. Can it get ready soon? I think it needs to. I think we have to, we have to inject this, this committee and this process at the county with some steroids. I think it needs to get going.
Thank you.
We're behind the eight ball. So, and this is, and this is no reflection on Waste Pro. I've thought about this long and hard, but I can't support this. I expect your contract to be approved, by the way, and I wish you well with it. It's not a... It's not a, it's not a shot against your company or, or your employees, by the way, the, the, um, the driver who was lauded in the press, passes by my house, and he, he earns that and more. Your staff is fantastic, they do a great job. You guys need, um, more capital support for your trucks and all that other kind of stuff. And I know that you work hard, Kenny and, uh, Russ and all, we, we get together, we, we, we work things out as best we can around arrangement that was a problem. But I have to say, I have to send my, uh, a message of conscience. We have to learn how to get around things when China doesn't buy our garbage. We have to, they, they, if, if you want to make America great again, start by being a better American. And great Americans solve problems, they don't surrender to them. And I don't think the answer for Pembroke Pines is, we're going to stop recycling. We need a better answer to that. So you can count on my support, uh, in, in, in the following way. I'm going to vote for the interim contract, I'm going to vote for the, uh, for the incineration contract, but, uh, um, and I'm, and I'm hoping that, uh, between now and when this long-term contract, which I expect will receive at least three votes today, gets approved, uh, that you will, uh, have, uh, additional tools. I'm also very much aware that this contract can be amended. So if, in fact, in the future, hopefully, uh, the, the short-term future, uh, a plan emerges for how we can repurpose our own recycling right here in Broward County, or maybe regionally, or maybe on a tri-county basis, I don't know, we can amend this contract. We can amend it, and we can, uh, move forward with it. I'm also very much aware, and this is my last point, Mayor, I'm also very much aware that, that we're not entering into a contract. This is more of a marriage. And let me tell you what I mean by that. The legislature just came up with a new rule, and congratulations to your industry for having done it, uh, where we can't just terminate a waste contract anymore. You got to pay them three years' worth of, of it. So it's sort of like Alamo. There isn't termination for convenience anymore in this. This is a whole new ballgame. So I, I, I now have a fiduciary obligation to approach these things with a great deal more care than, uh, than I did before. So, uh, that said, I also want to say to the city manager, we put you in an awful position, very, very difficult. And, uh, you and your staff have done a tremendous job negotiating this, and I want to thank the Carter as well for negotiating in good faith, but you all negotiated a great rate. I do have a couple of questions. Is the, uh, is the, um, the rate that's proposed here, uh, which is marginally above what, uh, what we're currently paying plus the CPI, is, does that include the rate for, uh, um, for bulk? Or is that going to be a separate charge?
City Manager?
The only thing you have before you this evening is a rate for the collection of solid waste.
Okay, so you're going to come to us later on with a rate for the bulk?
You will be getting, um, a rate, uh, the second reading of this ordinance, which will set the, um, the monthly amount for the resident.
For the bulk?
However, for everything. For residential, uh, however co-mingled, however, if you choose to vote for continuing recycling as you currently have it, you're probably looking just for that function close to an additional ten dollar a month increase on your bill.
All right. So, so, so for, for the, for the next four months or so, un- until January, we're going to continue to recycle, even though frankly, it's all going to go to the same place, to the incinerator, right? Is that right?
No, no, that's not true.
No, no.
It goes to Ruder.
It's going to Ruder, right. Ruder's going to send it to the incinerator.
Ruder recycles what is contaminated, as I said earlier-
Right.
-which could be anywhere from ten to forty percent, would then have to be disposed of, however, however they dispose of it.
I keep hearing about this contamination. Do they not process these plastics? Do they not chop, chop them up and then, and then, and then wash them in order to send them out?
I have no idea.
Do they expect pristine, clean, uh, uh, plastic to come in through the-
If, if someone puts a container in with a liquid that, uh, is wet, it destroys the paper.
I'm talking about plastics.
What they do with plastic, if there's liquid in it, I have no idea what they do.
We'll find out.
They probably throw it away. I don't think they have any cleansing process there at Ruder.
All right. Let, let's move on.
I can provide that to you before second reading.
All right, okay. I want to make one comment. I just wanted to say that years ago, started in New York, when they had the ships loaded with garbage-
Remember that?
Nobody would take it, and they kept going back and forth.
Remember Jersey?
For a year, a year, long time ago. I went personally to Ruder's and watched them, people with masks and all kinds of paraphernalia, go up on sliding conveyor belts, because people did not know how to recycle. And they were taking it off the belt and putting it where it should have been, in a recycle place. Plus, they would separate cardboard and pick it up and pile it and sell it. If you haven't been to the Ruder plant, you should, you should go. So, I'm the alternate on this committee, this committee, this city voted for an independent of that board, and as a district rather than a dependent. And the chair, Greg Ross, told me today that it's probably going to be about three months before, well, to hang on, they're going to have a decision. That's what he told me today at breakfast. So anyway, I just wanted to clear up those items. Vice Mayor, do you have anything to say?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. So, I, um, for much of what Commissioner Castillo spoke to, I'm, I'm in agreement with, uh, in terms when it comes to recycling, you know, there are, and we need to create a, a solution for that, there's no doubt about it. So, the solid waste group, let me just speak real quick to that. Um, you know, there, there are, you know, all the cities have a representation to this larger group, and then there's a smaller group that's working on the technicalities of things, and we're trying to get to a point where we are able to collectively come together and, and do disposal. And everybody has, uh, a, an equal voice into what that disposal is. So, some of the things that Commissioner Castillo speaks to about creating markets for recycling, well, that will come as a, as a collective body from everybody. The progresses, progress is being made. I can tell you that, uh, the meetings now are occurring once a week nearly, uh, in order to get through a, um, a draft interlocal agreement that can be brought before, in particularly this commission, and this commission can make a decision on whether or not they want to participate in this, uh, you know, future, uh, district, we'll call it, for solid waste. And so, solutions are coming. But as Commissioner Castillo says too, uh, right now, it ain't happening. Uh, recycling is, uh, there's a lot of confusion. I mean, I will, I will say there's two things that probably created the problem with recycling where we are today. Number one is that we went to a single-source collection for recycling. Remember in the old days, it used to be blue box or blue bin, brown bin, whatever, paper only here, and plastic over here, and people were pretty good, and their behaviors were good. But once we said, put everything in here, well, people would take a pizza box and throw it in there. It's cardboard. Well, no, it's got food on it. They would take a, a plastic bottle, and on the bottom you see this little triangle, and it's got a number in it. Well, they only, they only get to recycle number one, two, and three, but people would put number fours and fives in there, because they don't know. So we really confuse the public, is one thing. So that's where we get contamination. And when they put a bunch of stuff in there that can't be recycled, what happens is, is those processing facilities say, okay, well, normally we would take it at this rate, but because we have to do all this extra work, today, anybody who's doing recycling, any city, is paying three times what it costs to dispose of it. So you know what, you know what happens? And they just say, you know, it's cheaper to get rid of it, because if people can't, if you raise, uh, people's rates, they go through the roof. And that's exactly what's going to happen if you try to do, uh, recycling, uh, the good old-fashioned way, uh, where, where it's becoming very, very difficult. The other thing that really caused the problem, and I hate to say it, was the, um, the loss of the Sun Bergeron contract. Sun Bergeron had a, a great, uh, uh, facility that was doing, uh, source separating all the, all the garbage that came in. And, uh, they lasted about five years, some things changed, and the next thing you know, uh, they got wiped out. And then, you know, Sun Bergeron, uh, you know, had their own issues, and that, that entity exists no more, and, and the entity that took them over dis- dismantled that entire facility, and so that was another, uh, loss, uh, to this particular, uh, situation. So, uh, for us, we're very disappointed with that, uh, uh, as a group, in the solid waste group. And I, and I welcome anybody to talk about what's happening with this contract in terms of co-, you know, putting the recycling in with the solid waste. There are some great source information that speaks to what's happening to recycling today. You know, just some of the things I talked about, behavior, uh, markets, uh, capabilities, um, contaminations, and the lies that were given to the public by the plastic industry. The plastic industry lied to the public saying that this stuff could be recycled, and they knew it couldn't. There are many articles on that, of how they lied to us, and brain washed us into believing that it was all recyclable, and it's not. So people think things are recyclable, they're not. So there, there, um, there is a waste generation study that is taking place right now, um, or is going to be taking place, it's going to be looking at all the products that we deal with in terms of, uh, you know, what we throw away, uh, this is part of the process in order to understand what you need to do going forward. So, you know, yes, recycling is going to come back eventually. And I do want to say that taking these things to the incinerator, it is, by state statutes, recycling. And, and what that means is that you take trash, no matter what it is, recyclable or not, it gets burnt and gets converted into electricity. So it's a reuse. You convert trash into electricity, and we use electricity. The other thing is, is that they mine for metals. So they also recover metals. So it's not just electricity, it's metals as well. So there is a, a recycling of sort that's happening when we go to these facilities. So, um, those things are happening, and I just want to say that as it relates to the contract that we're looking at today, I do have some issues with the way that the, uh, the language for the recycling mixing with the solid waste is written. And I did speak to the city manager about this, and I did ask him in particular that should things change in the future, what is, what can we possibly do in order to, uh, get back to recycling of what we know? And so he had indicated to me, or he had provided me with a, a language in the contract that was rather generic, and, um, though I appreciate that, I still think it needs to be a bit more stronger, and it needs to be a bit more advantageous to the city, because the way that the language is written right now, that if we ever wanted to go back to recycling, it's a, sort of a mutual agreement type of thing, and I think it should be written in such a way that we should have some sort of advantage of being able to go back to recycling. If we can't cut the deal, then, you know, we have some terms that say, well, well, that we're going to, we're going to take an advantage out of the contract in order for us to be able to do that. That's not in here. And that's one, one of the things that I'm, I'm, I'm actually going to ask, we talk about, and I did talk to the city attorney and asked him to provide maybe some additional, uh, input in regards to what kind of language could be put in here that makes it a little bit stronger, such that if we, if the city chooses to go back to recycling, which we will, how can that language be written? And I don't know, Mr. City Attorney, if you were able to do that today.
May I respond, Mr. Mayor?
City Attorney?
I did speak to the Vice Mayor today, and we did review the agreement, and we do recognize that although this language in paragraph fifteen point five that does provide for some mutual options in the future with regard to adding to or subtracting from the current contract, but the objective of the Vice Mayor is different. Uh, the objective here is to reopen the conversation and the relationship with the vendor, the hauler, to provide for a commitment of sorts that would allow for recycling as if and when it can be done again in the future. Um, there, this is a franchise ordinance, it's a first reading of the ordinance. Between the first and second reading, uh, we will have to craft some language that not only is agreeable to the city attorney and the city manager specifically, um, but also to the, to the vendor, because this is not an item which, which has been negotiated. Um, there is a potential cost exposure for, for that option in going forward, it's not going to be free, uh, but there must be a way or a pathway to get to the commitment to do it. The city just doesn't know when it will exercise that commitment or that option, and we can't know that, but we do, um, as administration and as the city attorney's office, to find a way to, uh, some common ground with the vendor to make sure we don't lose that option. I think that's what the Vice Mayor's main destination is, which is, as if and when, not to wake up in the morning and say, whoa, God, we don't have any way to, to, to address that. We want to address it now for the future, not knowing what the future will, will hold, but recognizing that there may be a, a potential over the next seven years, and hopefully sometime less, to exercise that destination. I think that's the Vice Mayor's intention. I'm happy to work on that between now and the second reading with the manager and with staff, along with our vendor.
All right, all good discussion?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'm not done yet, so I'm, I apologize.
You have a lot more, or just?
No, no, I, I'm, I'm sorry, I just have a few more things. The other thing that I, uh, I didn't see in the contract that I think, uh, should be also, uh, discussed and possibly amended, uh, before the second reading, is to offer a drop-off recycling site, um, and because we are a linear city, one for, one for something, um, east of seventy-five and something for west of seventy-five, and this is a recycling drop-off, so this would allow for people who really, really do want to recycle, that they at least have a point or a location within the city that they are able to go and drop off their recyclables, and it does get picked up, uh, from, from our hauler, and they take it to, uh, to the recycling facility. No, it won't go to the incinerator, it'll go to a, what they call a MRF, um, and it'll be recycled, uh, you know, and, and the intention is, if you have a drop-off site, it's pure, it's like going back to your blue bin and your brown bin.
That's what I'm negotiating with the hauler.
Put plastic here, put, put cardboard here, put metals over here, and that's how these drop-off recycling, uh, sites are set up.
Like in our parks, perhaps? Locations like that?
Well, it, it could, I'm looking at something, uh, there, there could be. And, and I'm just asking maybe that that's some, uh, something that gets incorporated into this document, that we have at least a, a drop-off site on the east and a drop-off site west of seventy-five, because it's crossing over seventy-five, which is a challenge. And, um, and, and, and the only other thing that, 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 um, I do think also should be incorporated in here somehow, is talking about an education campaign about why it is that the city is doing what they're doing in regards to the recycling. And I, it's very, very important that we, we educate our community, because some of the things, like I say, the, 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 the general public, um, is not as familiar with recycling, uh, today as what they thought it might have been years ago, when you could contaminate and it was still available. So I think that it's very, very important that we also incorporate some sort of education campaign component in this, in this agreement as well.
And, and, and the good part about that, it would stop everybody from falsely saying, this is what we're doing, and getting all the residents upset emailing everybody. That's a good idea, because then we can tell them exactly what it is, and it comes from us as a group.
And so I, I'd like to make that as, uh, can I-
I think that's a consensus.
As an amendment, or just?
I think it's a consensus.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If I might, I, I don't know, I don't know if the drop-off site should be in that agreement, I think that's something the city could do.
All right, well, by second reading, you'll, you'll figure it out.
And we could address it, uh, as kind of a instruction from the commission. And as far as the campaign as to why, what the city is doing, we are going to institute that ourselves rather than rely on the vendor.
Good.
So those two things are important, we can look at it, and we can bring that information back to you.
All right.
Uh, if it's in the contract, then you're assuming, uh, Waste Pro to take on that role, and I would prefer that we take on the education role, and we'll also look at the drop-off recycling sites ourselves.
All right, further discussion?
Mr. Mayor? I just have one quick comment.
Quick.
Pretty quick.
Yeah.
Pretty quick. Uh, I, my notes here were, uh, Vice Mayor, also I had in my notes to talk about education for the recycling, because that's huge, I think huge. Um, and, and I wanted to, you know, we talked about, um, earlier about, you know, residents and, and their desire for recycling, and I think all of us up here en- enjoy the thought of recycling and would all prefer, Mark and I recycle very heavily, I mean, you know, all, all the time. Um, but along with some of the, um, emails and, and phone calls and stuff that I got from residents, um, you know, asking about the whole recycling part of it and how that language was, you know, in, in this, they also were- know, in this, they also were very, very adamant about cost for garbage pickup. And that was, you know, that ran a close, you know, even if not maybe a little bit more than the recycling that I was getting from residents. So both issues are extremely important, and I think we have discussed both issues here pretty heavily. And again, I do want to say to Mr. Dodge and to staff that as far as the cost end of it, I think you all have done, have brought forward to us something pretty phenomenal and something we really can be pretty happy to, you know, to work going forward with. So thank you, and thanks staff for that. But those were two of the hottest items that I was, reached out to by residents was the wanting to know more about the recycling and some of the, some of the kind of misinformation that was incorrect, or maybe they misunderstood it the wrong way, I'm not sure, and cost. So thank you, Mayor.
Okay, and just for Hollybrook, as a great guy that does the recycling over there, that is true recycling, where they watch it, that is, everybody ought to take their lessons from that man who takes it on himself to do that in Hollybrook.
Hi, Mayor. Mayor, I'll be.
No, 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 I'm talking about separating it and making sure that it's correct, that it's not, you know, make sure that they cut up the soda, plastic things, they cut them up. He does a very good job of that. Yes.
Yes, Mayor, just to declare, declare the.
The garbage companies, Commissioner Castillo picks it up. They pick it up on every Thursday, and I think it's a Wednesday. Go ahead.
Mayor, the vice mayor had three points of reference, the last two of which were absorbed by the manager looking into the issue of the recycling issue and the educational campaign. But the item with regarding guarding, modifying the contract, I'm assuming that the motion includes direction to do that on first reading for these.
Vice Mayor?
Yes, I also, yeah, and I also, I just, I don't, I would hope that the city manager just keeps an open mind about maybe not including the recycling stations as being a part of the contract, just.
All right.
Mayor, if I could.
I understand.
Okay, but that, yes.
Thank you. Further discussion?
Yes, Mayor, I'll be.
Commissioner Schwartz, real quick.
I'll be extremely brief. I want to thank, I want to thank Waste Pro and their team for working out the solution with our city administration. There is a, there's a benefit of voting yes on this contract. Number one, we're going to provide residents a rate reduction. We were, just a few short months ago, told that there was going to be an extreme increase in cost. And between Waste Pro and the city manager, you came to a, an agreement that is going to send shockwaves through this county. I believe that this is going to be the standard that a lot of cities can learn from. The Rovers contract and the fact that we are exiting that saved the city, for those who've lived here over the period of time that we've been under Rovers, thousands of dollars, thousands of dollars per household. With respect to recycling, it's my understanding, city manager informed me that Century Village is stopping their recycling September first, and they're a private hauler. So they represent about eight percent of our city. Now, when we got into this whole RFP process and there was discussion about closing franchises and getting the condos on board, I suspect based upon the negotiations that the city manager had, the thirty-eight thousand homes or accounts that are being serviced under this contract are going to be in a better economic position than the condos who aren't participating. And condos include not only those in Hollybrook and Colony Point and Century Village and Park Place, but the townhouse communities that are considered condos and alike. So vote no tonight on this contract is actually a disservice. We want to encourage our condo communities who are not participating in the sum of all parts to get on board with the city. We've provided an opportunity to see what pricing could actually be. Certainly, there's the three-year waiting period that's been discussed before. Mayor, this city rolled out the blue bins back in two thousand thirteen, and it's been going to the same place since. And when the Schwartz residence washes everything and puts it in the can, and then the truck comes by and then the neighbor next door didn't, guess what? It goes all to the same place, into the dump, into the dump. So if we can't get society during a pandemic to agree, how in the world are we going to have residents separate their pizza boxes from their newspapers? Let's be honest, people are going to do whatever's convenient for them. There has been a level of frustration on my part, service levels, certainly that's going to be changed. So by voting for this contract tonight, you are voting for accountability of the vendor, the callback opportunity that if they do not perform, there's a financial penalty. You vote against this contract, then what you're saying to the public is, I support bad behavior. So, city manager, I'm looking forward to your continued collaborative and cooperative negotiations with the vendor between now and second reading. Let's see where it turns out. I don't see a technology change in the next seven years that's going to, that's going to fix the desire to have true recycling. I definitely don't see this work, despite all the best efforts in the world, to have this thing ready to go in three months, three weeks, or three years, just like a nine-one-one dispatch and the BS that we're still dealing with, with that profoundly stupid decision. So I think the city of Pembroke Pines has shown Broward County what it's like to be honest and fair to the, to those who are in need of the services that impact everyone's lives every single day. Now, what I do expect out of the contract, because I do expect the new equipment, I do expect the service levels to get better, I do expect that there's going to be a live person on the phone, I do expect not having to take calls on Saturdays every time a certain zone fails to be picked up. I'm sure we're all experiencing at least one of those every week, or twice a week or sometimes three. But now we have the financial claw that we've needed. So you vote against this, it's business as usual. I'm ready to move the question.
All right.
Point of clarification?
Point of clarification, Commissioner Castillo, really quick.
Thank you, just, just, just on, I heard a lot of things there, but just on price, Mr. Dodge?
So in terms of cost, the way you presented this was that there's the cost of this contract, which will be slightly more than what we're currently paying together with the CPI, correct?
City Manager?
That is, will be determined as soon as we conclude our negotiations.
But you expect that.
I expect it would be minor.
Okay, but there will be a cost increase. Then there will be an additional, then there will be an additional cost for the bulk.
No, sir, that's with the bulk.
Well, that's what I was asking you before. I was asking you, so, so, so you're basically trading the recycling collection for the bulk, in a manner of speaking.
Mr. Dodge?
What we're talking about is co-mingling.
Right.
And there was a separate price on the RFP. If you look at it, there was a price for collection of the residential garbage, there was a price for the collection of the recyclables.
Right.
And there's also a price for the bulk.
Right. And that'll end up being more than what we're currently paying. And then, and then there's also going to be, hold on.
The bulk, the bulk.
And then there's also going to be an assessment.
What's your point of clarification?
And I'm just, just making sure that people, because it was said.
Well, people are going to get the truth.
Excuse me, they're going to be paying less than what they used to pay, that's not clear. And then there's also going to be an assessment for the solid waste group. They're going to assess property, it won't be an agglom assessment, but every single family home will have an assessment because they have to be paid too. And that's not a cost that we're currently paying.
Wait a minute, sir, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
An assessment for what?
Yeah. For the, for the service that they're providing in the recycling, who, all being assessed, I got that from the county.
Okay, but that hasn't been determined yet.
Yes, I know, I know, but when we talk about, when we talk about the cost to the homeowner, we need to be comprehensive. We can't parse that out here and there.
So the cost hasn't, so the cost hasn't been determined yet. Point of clarification?
It's pretty clear it's going to be more than what we're paying now.
All right, and you can't call, tell the public that it's going to be costing more when it's not.
I don't know.
I should know. I already managed to tell you what's.
Excuse me, sir, I heard a prognostication here that it was going to cost forty-four percent more, and I'm not so sure that that's going to be off the mark.
Okay, I think, I think the, what's being confused, Mayor?
I hear you.
Is originally with the bid, that was, it came in a lot more than forty-four percent more. We negotiated it back.
Thank you. I hope you're right.
Well, we did, and that's in the contract.
And it's too early to say that they're going to be paying us.
Item twenty-nine, further discussion? Call a roll, please, city clerk.
Commissioner Seifel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Good?
Yes.
Commissioner Castillo?
No.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Mayor Ordus?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Mayor and Commissioner, the second and final reading of this particular document will come back on September the first in these chambers.
Thank you, City Attorney. Item thirty, resolution.
Thank you, Mayor, if I may read. Item number thirty is a motion to adopt proposed resolution number twenty-two-one R-24, which is a resolution of the city commission of the city of Pembroke Pines, Florida, approving a grant from the Urban Area Security Initiative, known as UASI Grant Program for fiscal year 2020, through the State of Florida Division of Emergency Management, for the benefit of the Fort Lauderdale Miami comprised of various county and municipal entities, including the city of Pembroke Pines, Florida, authorizing the execution of a memorandum of agreement between the city of Miami as the sponsoring agency and the city of Pembroke Pines as a participating agency, which provides for the use of the city of Pembroke Pines share of the grant proceeds, providing for conflicts, severability, and finally providing for an effective date. Item thirty, thank you.
Second, move by Commissioner Castillo, a move by Commissioner Seifel, second by Commissioner Castillo, discussion. Hearing on call a roll, please, on item thirty.
Commissioner Seifel?
Yes.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Good?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Mayor Ordus?
Yes.
Motion passed.
And then number, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, thirty-seven fifty-six.
Thank you, sir, item thirty-one.
Thirty-one, thank you, Mayor and Commissioner. Item thirty-one is in fact a motion to adopt proposed resolution number twenty-two-one R-29, which is a resolution of the city commission of the city of Pembroke Pines, Florida, vacating and releasing certain easements which were granted to the city of Pembroke Pines by Skyrise, that's Sky R-I-S-E, Rise Investments LLC, a Florida limited liability company, as more particularly described in the grant of easement dated December fourteen, two thousand and five, which is recorded on April twenty-four, two thousand and six in official records book forty-one eight eighty-two at page sixteen twenty-eight of the Broward County Public Records, and is more particularly described in the grant of easement dated May thirty-one of two thousand and six, recorded on October ten, two thousand and six, in OR book forty-two nine eighteen at page eleven twenty-two of the Broward County Public Records, providing for conflicts, severability, and finally providing for an effective date.
So move, move by Commissioner Castillo, second by Commissioner Seifel, discussion.
Yes, I have just a quick question, Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor?
So what was the purpose originally of putting in such an extensive easement system on that property?
The city manager?
I don't know that answer, Mr. Kennedy or Dennis, you want to?
Dennis.
Okay.
Mr. Mealy, I'm sorry.
Dennis Mealy, two hundred East Boulevard Boulevard, Fort Lauderdale. Originally, there were several parcels from one hundred and eighty-fourth Avenue all the way over to one hundred and eighty-sixth Avenue, which were going to have cross access in three different places. As it's turned out, they only have cross access in one place, which is just a little bit south of Pines Boulevard, it's almost like a frontage road. So these easements that are being removed are for the other two locations where there no longer is cross access. That's basically it.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Call a roll, city clerk.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Seifel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Good?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Mayor Ordus?
Yes.
Motion passed.
And then number thirty-seven fifty-seven, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, City Attorney, item thirty-two.
Thirty-two, for the record, is a motion to adopt proposed resolution number twenty-two-one R-30, which is a resolution of the city commission of the city of Pembroke Pines, Florida, ratifying authorization to support settlement of the bankruptcy cases for Purdue Pharma and Melencrot related to the opioid multi-district litigation, authorizing the appropriate, well, it's interesting, providing for the appropriate, and for conflicts, providing for severability, providing for an effective date.
Move by Commissioner Seifel? Is there a second?
Second.
Second, who had the second?
Vice Mayor.
Vice Mayor.
Vice Mayor had the second. Discussion on item thirty-two on the project. Hearing on city clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner Seifel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Good?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Mayor Ordus?
Yes.
Motion passed.
And then number is number thirty-seven fifty-eight, and thank you Commissioners for your support of this item, which is putting the city of Pembroke Pines in a much better place.
Thank you, yeah, get rid of it.
Thank you.
Item thirty-four, city attorney.
How about thirty-three first?
We did that.
We did, we passed it, it was.
And amended, yes.
That's correct. Thirty-four is the next item, for the record, which is a motion to adopt proposed resolution number twenty-two-one R-32, which is a resolution of the city commission of the city of Pembroke Pines, Florida, approving and authorizing the execution of the original agreement and First Amendment to the interlocal agreement with Broward County for solid waste disposal and support services for the purpose of utilizing the waste-to-energy services provided by Reliberated Environmental Systems Incorporated. Attached here to is exhibit A and B respectively, providing for conflicts, severability, and providing for an effective. Thank you.
Move by Commissioner Castillo, is there a second?
Seifel.
Second, Commissioner Seifel, discussion. Hearing on call a roll, please.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Seifel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Good?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Mayor Ordus?
Yes.
Motion passed.
And then number thirty-seven fifty-nine, Mayor and Commissioners.
Thank you. Commissioner Seifel, you have anything on the league, other than we're going to have our meeting of Florida League of Cities next week?
Yes, Florida League is meeting next week, and the, some folks will go in and some folks have been not, are not calling, but they are going to be able to zoom in on the, I'm sorry. They're going to be able to zoom in on the, or phone in on the annual, annual board meeting. I was given that information today, so hopefully we'll have good turnout and, you know, a lot of participation, because it is the annual, annual meeting.
All right, reports to the city manager.
No items, Mayor.
City Attorney.
City Attorney, I'm sorry, do you have any?
Thank you for the opportunity, Mayor, but I'll defer to the next meeting, thank you very much.
All right, Commissioner Schwartz?
Okay, Mayor, I'll be brief. Discussion and possible action, a possible motion to direct the city manager, the city's chief building official, and the city attorney to review, study, analyze, and to evaluate the prospect of legislatively requiring property owners, including HOA's condominium associations, cooperative associations by ordinance where legally possible, and under the Florida Building Code, along with applicable rules and orders of the Broward County Board of Rules and Appeals to provide to city officials any and all engineering and architectural reports pertaining to the structural, electrical, or life safety issues, or matters affecting buildings and structures under their control within twenty-four hours after receiving such a report, in an effort to protect the life, health, and safety of citizens and residents of the city, particularly in light of the tragedy of the Champlain Towers south collapse in the city of Sunrise, Surfside, Florida. Colleagues, for the last fifteen years, I've been doing home inspection, I have worked with an engineer, engineering firm, doing these forty-year building certifications. Tragically, the ninety-eight lives that were lost was beyond preventable. It's just remarkably how sad, how there was just, just a lack of action. And the, when the collapse. of, um, action. And the, when the collapse happened, I, 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 I knew it was a, I, I knew it was a spalling issue. There, there was just, there was just no, you don't, a building doesn't fall like that without it. So, this language written here is very broad for a specific reason, 'cause Miami-Dade, they have a different constitution. Broward County can't do what Miami-Dade does. And I'm not expecting that we're gonna be doing anything remotely close to that. Um, the, when government asks private sector to do things, and then they take the paperwork and it just goes into a drawer, that's not protecting the public. Um, certainly, it isn't necessarily forty-year buildings that have issues. Fifteen years ago, we dealt with Chinese drywall. And currently, there are buildings with Chinese steel in them all over the state of Florida. And because they're not marine-layer protected, encapsulated because of construction costs, you have buildings that are less than twenty years that may be in worse shape than, than, than those that are forty or older. Um, there's been particular attention to high-rise buildings, but any building can suffer, um, spalling and structural shifts and that sort of thing. One particular building that comes to mind is in Sunny Isles, a building called the Aqualina. Um, I was in that building just as it CEO'd. And they had a pin pile issue, where the building was actually leaning. And they hadn't, they hadn't closed on the first unit yet. Construction technology has advanced. Engineering phenomenons have advanced, but, uh, we live on, we live on a coral bed. And central Florida has sinkholes. We have sea level rise down here. We have saltwater intrusion and king tides. And the issues that we, that we see along the beach are much different than what we have out here in Pembroke Pines because of saltwater air concentration. However, um, I, I am, I, I'm keenly aware of, um, of buildings in this city, including some of our own, that are in need of, uh, an engineering review. And I wanna take this item as an opportunity to give, um, you know, the good folks in our building department and the administration, and, you know, to kinda just inventory what we have going on here. Um, certainly, we know that the old city hall has a latent defect in it. Um, I don't know how, I don't know how the city manager survived that long in his office when the wind blew. But certainly, um, uh, we've learned, we've learned from technology. So, you know, I, I asked Mr. Buckland, um, earlier tonight about cat-five buildings. We, we've learned a lot from hurricanes, what they can do. I, I am, I am deeply concerned about anything above a cat-three along the beach. Unfortunately, we're gonna lose buildings, just like we saw in Surfside. If we get hit, if we get hit with Hurricane Oblivion, i- it's gonna happen. There's just too much sway. Um, there has, there has, as a result of this collapse, um, it's gonna be the, the first significant, uh, building code change since Andrew. Now, what's interesting is while South Florida, Dade and Broward County made changes in September of nineteen ninety-four with the building code, Palm Beach didn't do anything until two thousand and one. I didn't think that, you know, Palm Beach was, um, not in the hurricane zone, but apparently, if you have enough money and political power, you can delay things. And unfortunately, we're gonna hear that some of the delays were political down there. Um, so, I just wanna do the right thing, just get on the table. Um, I'm hoping to get just unanimous consent, just say, you know what, let's just do the right thing. So, at least, God forbid, you know, something happens here, at least, you know, we're at least ahead of it. Um, I will tell you that, uh, forty-year certifications y- used to be, um, something that you could schedule. Now, everyone wants one. And now, there's a shortage of engineers. Uh, I have a friend of mine who's a civil engineer, who's currently doing concrete spalling. Um, I thought the, uh, that this might have been a building that he was working on. He was not. Uh, but this is like everyday stuff for me. It's everyday stuff for building officials. They, they, they know what, they, they know what it is.
Do you wanna make a motion, Commissioner?
Um, I, I like, I like to, I like to move the item, uh, with, with...
Move by Commissioner Schwartz. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Saipul. Discussion on item thirty-five.
Yes.
Commissioner Castillo.
Okay. So, I, I appreciate, I appreciate the sincerity of, of, of the item. Uh, Surfside was a horrible tragedy. Um, we don't yet have the facts on it yet, but it looks like, um, Commissioner Schwartz is right. In many respects, it might have been prevented. We'll, we'll wait to see what, uh, what the information comes back on. But buildings should not be, uh, falling down like that in the middle of the night. And, uh, um, whatever it is, whatever it is that, uh, that caused that tragedy, it's likely that it was predictable in advance. And just, just, just for that reason, uh, we have to be attentive to what facts come back from the review, which we don't yet have. However, um, I don't know whether it was that the publishing of this item crossed sort of the same time period as, um, a very enlightening email that we got from Mr. Giordano. But even before that, there was an email from Mayor, um, Ryan, who likes to write to, uh, the elected, uh, family in Pembroke Pines. And, and I'm thankful that he does. This general question is, is, uh, is, is governed by a state statute. And the state statute requires the property appraiser to tell the Board of Rules and Appeals, uh, what, what their list of properties over forty are. And then, for some reason, that, that board then contacts the city, um, Engineers' Office of the Buildings Department, I'm not quite sure which. Sam, if I trip over this, you'll correct me.
Yes, sir.
Uh, please jump in. Don't, don't ask for permission. And then, and then from there, uh, a notice will go out to that building, saying, "You have X number of days to provide us with, uh, uh, your engineering report." Uh, our Buildings Department, through Calvin Giordano and Associates, already collects, and, and even before that, they collect these reports. And they send out the letters that they're required by law to send out. And I don't know that it says it in the statute, but I think part of the reason that cities are brought into this thing is so that these reports can become public records. And people who want to access them can, can come and get them. But it's not just a library-ing, uh, uh, function. We also ask for the corrective action plan. And it is the Buildings Department that closes it out. But the Buildings Department doesn't con- con- uh, conduct these inspections. These inspections and these, these, these reports and the work that's taking place, that gets done by a third-party engineer. It, it's, it's, it's not something that we do. I'm not quite sure what, and, and by the way, the, I, I spoke to both Representative Bartleman about this, and also to State Senator Jones about this, um, actually, much closer to when the Surfside issue came up. The legislature will be taking this up, uh, and, um, hopefully promulgating a better, more workable, more responsive, more, um, uh, robust rule throughout the entire state, so that Florida's, what is it, Mayor, a thousand or so cities, don't each of them have to, uh, make up their own rules. The, i- it's, it's much better if this is handled uniformly. What I wanna make sure is that in complying with whatever statute there is, because we're never going to be the, the, the inspection official, that we don't put ourselves in a position of liability. Uh, Mr. City Attorney, I wanna talk to you a little bit about liability and pick your brain about this. So, as I understand it under the law, there's a difference between, let's say, an operational responsibility of a city and a delegated responsibility of a city with respect to, um, liability. Can you talk to us a little bit about that?
Mr. Mayor, if I may try to respond?
Mr. Attorney?
Um, there, there is a distinction in the law, and it relates to some great degree to tort, tort liability and, and also...
Right.
To sovereign immunity that the government, uh, has. Um, when, when the city, um, through its city staff, um, mows the grass in a median, that's a, an operational function which it's required to do. And to that extent, it's not discretionary. It's not something which, say, evaluated, they simply cut the grass, and it's an operational function. Um, to the extent that, that there could be, in the context of a review responsibility that's being described by, by Commissioner Schwartz, there, there could then become a more of a discretionary function. 'Cause right now, you are accurate. The, the law basically provides that the inspections are not performed by the building official, by the CBO of the city, of a city, and not this CBO. It's done by a third-party engineer that's required by this forty-year inspection. And by the way, there are only two counties that have it. It's Miami-Dade and Broward. Other, other counties do not. Um, to that extent, then, if, if, uh, a creative attorney were to open up a door of discussion with regard to a discretionary function, not an operational one, they could suggest that sovereign immunity could be pierced, or hypothetically. I don't wanna put the city under a bus this evening, but certainly, there's a, there's room for argument that could occur in, in some respects regarding that function. But you have to define what the function's gonna be. What's the responsibility gonna be? What are the assigned tasks? And those are things which I cannot answer without the benefit of your discuss, discussion.
Precisely. So, 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 and that's very helpful, and I appreciate it. So, we're already collecting the reports on the forty-year. We're already asking them to give us proof of compliance with those reports, all of that, all of this coming from third-party engineers in order to close it out, under the current law. We are currently doing that. So, I need to, I need to understand, because I'm okay asking staff to go and study this, but w- w- mindful that the legislature is likely to usurp anything that we do, you know, by, uh, uh, their own changes in law. What precisely, in addition to what we're doing now, is being requested? Because this is a very serious issue. And I'm, I'm very, very, uh, uh, interested in, in knowing if we can be more helpful. But I'm not looking to take on, uh, liability because some condo association, or some act of God, or something else intervenes on a building, uh, and, uh, and, uh, and, uh, and a disaster happens there. Let's set aside that there aren't that many buildings. In the fullness of time, there will be many more that are forty years old in Pembroke Pines. But, and, and, and let's also set aside that none of them are as sophisticated as, 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 as the Surfside building was, with multiple basements and some, you know, where people parked and, and all that other kind of stuff. We don't have buildings like that here. But let, but I, I wanna understand from the maker of the motion, what in addition to what the current, um, um, statute says, is he contemplating that our staff at City Hall would do? Thank you.
Mr. Schwartz?
Sure. Um, if I could use Park Place as an example, the Arbor Building actually has a garage. People park under the building, and that building was built in nineteen eighty-five.
Mm-hmm.
And that means that four years from now will be forty years. So, we are here now.
Mm-hmm.
Um, Hollybrook is a little bit older. Um, Colony Point, uh, is just a couple of years behind Park Place. Now, the language that was provided, uh, in tonight's agenda was thoughtfully carved out. And a part of the process is to give, um, the city attorney and our building department and the city administration an idea to see what else can be done to make things better. That's what we, that's what we're, that's what we're charged to do, to just ensure that we're doing everything possible. So, say, for example, um, I lived in the Elm Building on the eighth floor, and I rode out Hurricane Andrew. Now, it was my first hurricane. I watched the TV. They told me to get masking tape and put X's on the windows. And, and, and fill up your tub with water and, 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 and have a mattress ready to jump into the tub. It's come a long way since nineteen ninety-two. Um, again, there, 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 there are more repairs being done to buildings, remediation being done to buildings. But all you have to do is look at the balcony. And if it looked orange, you got some issues going on. Um, truthfully, the, uh, the collapse in Surfside, uh, was a known problem of saltwater intrusion, um, in the garage for, for more than a decade. Uh, they were infiltrated with king tide. They didn't do proper waterproofing. That's called paint. Just putting exterior paint on a building is gonna preserve the inside, you know, the inside of it. So, a simple thing, um, that we may look at considering is how often do commercial buildings get, are required to be painted in this city? If you protect the outside, you're not gonna get the interior corrosion. You're not gonna allow, you're not gonna allow cracks in the stucco and the saw there and all that stuff that comes along with it. You know, we, um, you know, we go to the dentist. They tell you, go get a cleaning so you don't get a root canal. Well, if you don't go to the dentist, chances are, you're gonna wind up with a root canal. And that's kinda what it is. The, the forty-year certification, um, there, there's, there's a lot of latitude when it comes to what actually gets reported. Again, I've, I've been on, I've been on these jobs. I know the depth, and sometimes how, how shallow they can actually be.
Rip up those, Commissioner Schwartz?
I'm try, I'm trying to give, I'm trying to give a little bit more depth, more depth of, of where we're coming from. What I'm saying is, is that there's an opportunity for us to do better.
Okay.
And, um, I'd like to get the smart people in the room to figure out how, if, if they, if, they've seen it. They've seen the years and years and years, uh, especially on the structural side. Um, our fire department deals with electrical issues, okay? That, you know, electrical's bad. It's not gonna drop a building, but structural will. Um, Mayor, I, I see Hollybrook every day from the top down, okay? And there are roofs that are, that are holding tons of water. I mean, tons of water. That has an impact on, on the, on the longevity of a building.
Mm-hmm.
So, um, look, there's technology, Commissioner Saipul, that now they do tapered roofs to get the water off the roof, so you don't have the ponding. Don't have ponding, you don't have, you don't have roof collapse. There's technologies that are now available. So, if there's an opportunity for us to enhance code or make a suggestion, even an education piece, you know, that, that's all I'm looking for.
Let's see what everybody thinks.
Yep.
All right, for a discussion, call or roll, please, City Clerk?
Oh, yeah, I was about to say, the real estate board also has an interest in this matter.
Okay, City Clerk, call or roll, please.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Commissioner Saipul?
Yes.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Good?
Yes.
Mayor Ordus?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Good night.